All right, we'll get started. We'll call to order the full city council meeting. The clerk will call the roll. If you hear your name, say "here."
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley? Bresnahan? Leahy?
Present.
LeBron Martinez?
Here.
Lisi?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Roman?
Sullivan?
Here.
Talman?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Valentine?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
City of Hoyok.
And the city council.
Just a slight announcement, we do have a guest coming in, but we do have a lengthy agenda, of which the tax rate. As we go through that, if you do ultimately vote for whatever rate is selected, just as a reminder, we no longer sign the form and mail it in. We actually have to either go online tonight, or what Tony, the assessor, will do for us is, after the vote, one at a time, if we go into his office, you can go into the system, click, and you're done. So that way, we get it done tonight. If we don't get those signatures in, you can't set the tax rate, and we'll be back to last year's problem. So just a reminder on that. It's a little nuanced, but that's the new rule. With that, I'd like to have Councilor Leahy escort in a very special guest. As we all know, we filed, or Councilor Leahy filed for a proclamation from the city council for Mike Plazant and 31 years of excellent writing service to the city of Hoyok. With that, I'll have Councilor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor McGee. As Councilor McGee indicated, Mike Plazant is no longer going to be covering the coverage and the news of the city of Hoyok. And as everybody in here knows, that he's done a fantastic job for, it's been 31 years, correct?
Yep.
Michael Plazant got his degree, Bachelor of Arts, in New Hampshire, Keene State, I believe, if that's correct?
Yep.
And he did what he truly set out wanting to do, which, you know, I applaud him. He wanted to be a journalist. He got his degree in journalism. He went to the Republican in Springfield, worked there for a long time, long time. And I think every person in this room, at least all the people who are kind of nerds like I am, that have either been involved with politics or watching politics, Michael Plazant has had a place, I would say basically, in your heart, because he's written about all the things that we've wanted to either know about or care about. I'm gonna keep this short. Just one of the things is, I'm doing my research in regards to Michael Plazant. I was kind of, one thing I did know, he was a Yankees fan, which the only person that kind of enjoyed that was Councilor McGee, you know, Tom McGee back here, he enjoyed that. But also a Dolphins fan?
Oh, damn.
So I think we're gonna be handing back this proclamation. I'm just kidding. No, Michael, though, no, seriousness. Michael, you've been here with us. I've been here 20 years, and you've been here longer than I have. But on behalf of the entire city council, we just want to say thank you so much for serving the city. You know, you've written so many great articles, and I greatly appreciate it. So having said that, on behalf of the city council, accept this proclamation.
She'll be in the middle, so I don't crap up.
So natural.
There you go, sir. Audience, yours.
Wow, so this is what you all look like.
Thank you, Councilor Leahy, President McGee, members of the city council. I'm honored to receive this, and I will cherish it. You know, when I would cover city council meetings, we'd be in the city room, and reporters would talk about what they're doing for the evening, and I would say, "I'm covering the city council," and folks would say, "Oh, that's too bad." I'd say, "No, man, it's entertaining as hell." Stuff that they say and do, you know? I mean, I legitimately enjoyed it, not the four-hour budget meetings, but it was interesting to cover, you guys. Institutions like the city council are such big targets for criticism, which is legitimate. The problem that's happened with the Internet age is the bitterness has flowed, and bitterness becomes complaining, criticism becomes complaining, and that can be a challenge to take. But what the city council does is important, and you guys should know that what you guys do matters, and you shouldn't let the criticism get in the way of that. And with that, let's go around the room.
Agree with me on the reading, please?
Take it easy on the new guy.
Pushing to adjourn.
Yeah, I move with adjourn. Josie, you have a big heart. You're one of the folks I wish I had met sooner in my life, and you will go as far as you want to. Linda, man, I have appreciated your pointed comments over the years, and I have some of During a debate in February of this year about the $10,000 purchase of a Christmas tree with a debit card, Linda said, "I think it is stunning, I think it is dismaying, I think it just smacks of arrogance toward taxpayers." In June 2015, when, in January 2015, when a former city official had taken a full-time job and was still working for the city, Linda didn't like this. She said, quote, "I want this man to know that we are not going to put up with it. He is a self-important official, arrogant, and fails to work full-time with the city while collecting a full-time salary. This man has abused the city. We can't afford no-show jobs. Linda, do not come out of your shell in the next year, okay? Thank you." Councilor Bartley, you've been like a second father, oh, no, those are Nelson's notes. Now, in seriousness, I appreciate your passion over the years. Sometimes it was like a volcano, and I was there for every eruption, and I appreciated it. One of the things you did that was helpful to me was inviting legislators and state officials in for periodic meetings. And that was not only informative, but it put such officials on notice that Hoyoke was watching. Councilor Lisi, I grew to appreciate your intelligence, and your savvy, and your sense of humor. I'll miss our in-meeting texts, but we'll continue to do out-meeting texts. Joe McGivern, I've never covered an official with as high a level of integrity as Joe McGivern. Gladys, the years roll by, and you still look like you're 21. For those who might be prone to criticize Gladys for not speaking as often as some other councillors do, you're missing the point, because Gladys's work takes place in the backyards and the front steps of her constituents. I know, because I've seen her do it. That's where she gets her stuff done, and that's why she's popular, and that's why she's a good counselor. Nelson, you're not here, you're gone already. It's like 10 people left the room. I appreciated covering Nelson. I like Nelson a lot. Chicago is gonna be getting an interesting figure. Juan, you've been a great, you have a great sense of humor, and that's so important in this job. Say hello to Coco for me. And most importantly, you understand the key part of being an official in Hoyoke, which is, there are two kinds of people, those who live in Ward 6, and those who wish they lived in Ward 6. Councilor Leahy.
I'll leave.
Now, you're the consummate counselor. Councilor Leahy is the guy that people go to when they want to bring something forward. He's the guy who gets the phone calls, an example of which came in a story I did a few months ago about an event that happened at Robert's Sports Complex in October of 2017. A field hockey player had gotten injured, and it took the ambulance a while to get there, because the address for Robert's Sports Complex is actually the address for Hoyoke High School, which is around the block. Jim filed an order to get that corrected. That's the kind of thing that Councilor Leahy does. Every time there's an election, Jim wonders, "Am I gonna get the votes?" And every time there's an election, he gets a landslide of votes, and it's, those are the reasons why. Peter, Peter Talman, Peter's the guy you want navigating the ship in a storm, calm, composed, even keeled. If anyone has ever said that they've seen Peter lose his temper, I would say you're a liar, because I've covered him for over 20 years, and it's never happened. Councilor Bresnahan, to your empty chair, you are a fountain of quotes, and, I'm gonna read some of those. But it was hard to pick just a couple, so I'm just gonna pick some from a debate that you guys had in December 2014 about what to call the tree that's festooned with lights and decorations, whether it should be called a holiday tree. And Bresnahan said, quote, "It's not a holiday tree. What's a holiday tree? We're looking for a little common sense here. It's a Christmas tree. It should be called a Christmas tree. It seems pretty simple to me, pretty straightforward. It's the Christmas season, Christmas peasants, Christmas carols. I don't see this as a threat to anyone." I'll miss that, Dan. Councilor Sullivan, you filed some orders that were really interesting for me to cover over the years, illegal dumping, panhandling, but mostly your fearless remarks regarding the diocese of Springfield about Matadella Rosa Church, which, of course, has disappeared now, ironically. I appreciate that, and it was a pleasure covering you. Councilor McGee, you're a gentleman, and your dedication to Hoyoke is probably exceeded only by your kindness. We will be in touch. There's other councillors, former councillors I wanted to mention, my friend Kevin Durdane. It was a pleasure to cover your Voice of God pronouncements from the pulpit, podium over the years. Others I wanted to mention, Diaz Dada Lopez, Mark Joyce, Ray Fair, and of course, my friend, Patty Devine. Lastly, city clerk Brenna Murphy McGee. I don't think there's anybody I have known who's more devoted to the city of Hoyoke than Brenna. She starts work early, she leaves work late, and she does it all with a grace and good cheer that some of us are able to muster occasionally, but she does it every day, and we all benefit from it. Thank you all.
Number one, it was a public hearing for poles and wire locations by the Hoyoke Gas and Electric, Pine Street, Pine Street, and Dunav.
Motion to remove from the table and open the public hearing.
Motion to remove from the table, open a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion would be to...
Does anybody want to speak on it?
Is anyone here for it? No?
Oh, Hoyoke Gas and Electric?
Yep. To the microphone.
Hello, councilmembers.
It's, there's a switch right underneath.
I got it. Check.
All right, perfect. And your name, name, address?
Yeah, my name is Vincent O'Connell. I work for Hoyoke Gas and Electric in the electric division. My address is at 99 Suffolk in Hoyoke.
And with regards to the poles and wires?
Yes, so we're looking to install, I believe, three new poles in the Pinehurst and Dunav area of Hoyoke for one of our backyard service relocation projects.
Any questions for Vincent? Councilor McGivern?
I could, Mr. President. I think these backyard service changes are important to many neighborhoods and many residents. Just by ordinance, so we require that anybody affected is notified. Have the property owners been notified of this?
Yes, the plans for the pole installations have been provided to the neighborhood residents.
Thank you.
So motion would be to approve?
I get it.
Motion made a second to close the public hearing and approve the request for the three new poles.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any roll call for these? Joe, or?
I don't believe so, Mr. President, but...
So it would be for all in favor of the poles, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Do we want to go out of order, or?
Make a motion to proceed out of order and start with public comment.
Our motion is to take up public comment first. All those in favor?
Aye.
There's two for public comment. Sorry, you are all set. Sorry about that. First is Dave Moore from 37 Montgomery Ave.
Yes, sir.
Dave?
I'm...
Can, who moved the microphone? Can we?
I'm a bit surprised. I was waiting until the sewer rate segment, but this'll be fine.
Okay, so just have name, address, which we already done, but with regards to this, with public comment, we open it up, and for 10 people, there's only two tonight, so it'll be two minutes. You have two minutes for?
I won't need that long at all, okay? Thank you very much for putting me down there so quickly. I'm here on, I'm a DPW commissioner, my colleagues are here with me, the manager is here too. I'm here on behalf of the proposed sewer rate and the change that I'm hoping that you undertake tonight. I would, most all of us, and all of you certainly, are aware of the need for it. It hasn't been changed in 10 years, way too long. What I think is most significant about it today is something serious has changed, and that is, is that with your help, the help of the water department, a lot of former people that were on this board, the sewer department, sewer area actually has teeth for the first time it's ever had since the sewer department was ever formed. And that is, that we're, was, through the water department, able to chase after delinquent payers, which was, hadn't, we had no option to do that. We do now. The, you know, we work with the water department, thanks to you, and a really, really serious deficit that became obviously fiscal deficit was that the sewer fees weren't collected because there was no, no way to punish anyone who didn't pay. That's changed, and with it, our position fiscally. The amount of dues that are being collected is fantastic. It's changed the entire picture at the sewer department. And why I'm here is to say, we have an unbelievable opportunity because of that, to join that with a new sewer rate. And the ongoing, since 214, yearly deficit, the yearly subtraction of money from somewhere that it should not be taken, because it's the only place, everyone understands, the, you know, the sewer fund must be balanced every year. Change that sewer rate, we'll collect the money, and shortly, there'll be no deficit year after year after year. I can promise you that. Thank you.
Next is Helene Florio, 31 Wellesley Ave. Good evening, Helene Florio, 31 Wellesley Road. I'm here to talk with you tonight about probably one of the most important questions that you face every year, and that is the tax rate classification. I'm not gonna give, you know, the usual kind of information that we've done in the past. I just want to point out to you some of the things that are happening in Hoyoke that are affecting the businesses. And they include, right now, the sewer rate, which has to be taken care of. The water infrastructure is in tough shape. Not the water, the water's great, but the pipes under the road need, in many, many cases, some of them are from the 1860s and forward from that, they're very old, they need to be replaced in order to keep the water pressure going. The Whiting Street Reservoir has a $2 million tab on that. Drain it, or fix the dam. The combined sewer overflow, which has a federal mandate on that, that it needs to be fixed. And we've had a very recent example, which was partly affected by the neighborhood in which I live, when the combined sewer flooded and went over at the River Terrace-North Pleasant Street junction, and that's the water that comes off of the mountain, and some of it comes down from 91, and some of it drains down in what we call the dingle areas that we have in the area. And that is something that's really important, it needs to be separated. I don't know what the total amount of money on that is, but it's huge. We need sufficient gas supplies so that new businesses can be started, and we'll have the fuel so that they can be maintained and used. There's been a major proponents for the marijuana growth industry, but that growth industry requires a lot of gas in order to keep it going. And one of the biggest things on the books, and I think that anybody that has a feeling about this community and the future for it, are the hope for two new schools. You put all of this together on top of what we have now, we have basically the highest commercial tax rate on businesses in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Right now, the tax rate for the commercial is 39, excuse me, 39.69, but you put the 1.5% CPA tax, which goes on the tax, not on the full evaluation, brings that to over $40 that they're paying now, before we do anything else. The homeowners are at 19.13. It's really very high. We feel that much of all of this needs to be evaluated as a whole package, not piecemeal. We feel that there are opportunities for growth in Hoyoke. For example, the Whiting Street Reservoir area, we've been told that the Whiting Street Reservoir is offline and is probably not going to be used for drinking water ever again. And there is some wonderful land there that has opportunities for development and for the future. We would like to have that in a package of an analysis of the properties that the city owns, and we would like to have a concentrated effort on speeding up zone changing, and we have brownfield reductions and remediations in the city. We feel there are ways that we can encourage and increase commercial business, which will bring in new money. And we hope that you will please do everything possible to try to get the tax rate on the commercial down to less than $40 on 1,000, including all of the taxes that people have to pay, noting that anybody that's on a commercial rate has to pay for their own trash and a lot of other services, again, separately. It's not part of the package that those of us that are in the residential have and enjoy. I know you have a hard decision to make, but I want you to be aware of all of these things that are facing this community. I know it's not, we can't do it all at once, but we shouldn't allow it to lag, but we need to all work together so that we can have a beneficial future for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Last is Andrea Schmidt, 495 Appleton Street. She, she was out in the hallway? Andrea?
Yes, she left. I spoke to her, but...
Right there. To the microphone. Yes. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Andrea Schmidt. I'm resident here. I live on 495 Appleton Street, which I believe is 4A. My councillor's Josie Valentine. I'm here to just talk about, I recently read about that the finance committee approved the grant to, for the city to purchase tasers, and I just wanted to come here and just bring up a few quick facts about this for you guys to consider. Basically, one of the things from this grant that I found was that it only, it only actually funds the equipment to be purchased, but not the actual training of tasers, for police officers to use tasers. This is really important, because folks really, if folks aren't being trained for this, it's actually a lot of, there's a few statistics that show that, and since, in the past year, over 1,000 people have died after being tased, since the product has gone to the market. And this actually got to the point that, you know, since this past October, after a third taser death, California officials actually started reconsidering using this because of the fact that not enough training was being used. So if this is something that we do start implementing more so, and we start actually seeing that tasers are being misused by our, by officials here, you know, that's something that's falling on the city, the liability is falling on the city, it's not falling on the federal government, right? Additionally, yeah, I mean, this is also something that, in Hoyoke, one of the things that we found is that Massachusetts State Police, this is actually data from the Massachusetts State Police, actually, tasing actually disproportionately affects black and Latino folks. In the first half of 2018, according to an ongoing investigation by the Boston Institute for Nonprofit Journalism, 48% of taser deployments have been on black and Latino residents, despite the fact that they only make up 16.2% of the state's population. Hoyoke, as we know, is over 50% Latino, right? I believe 12 cities got this grant, and this is just something that, you know, as a person of color here, as a Latina, as a, living in a city where, you know, most of the people I see and live with are Latino and black folks, this just feels like a really important thing to bring up. And so, yeah, and the second part of the grant talks about bringing funding to increase quotas on folks that are being stopped in these top 10 most dangerous areas, and again, you know, given all of this, do we need more quotas, really, to stop folks who don't necessarily need to be stopped? So thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. That is it for public comment?
Make a motion to proceed out of order to 18C.
I have a second.
Did you just sign?
Nope, there's only three on the, on the list, so...
Is there somebody else who wanted to speak? Motion to suspend the necessary rules and allow for additional public comment from folks that didn't, you had a chance to sign up?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sir, you looking to speak?
I apologize, I missed the signup sheet. My name is Stephen Rosenbusch, R-O-S-E-N-B-U-S-H. I'm the owner and curator of the William B. Skinner Estate on North Hampton Street. I just returned to Hoyoke after a five-and-a-half-year absence for medical treatments in New York. York. I'm fine, I'm going to be around to annoy you for a long time. I had been following as best I could, using my pleasantries reporting, I've been following what's going on here. What I couldn't follow is what's happened that hasn't been reported. I came here, I went for a walk on North Hampton Street, I challenged any of the city councilmen here to just walk on North Hampton Street, pass some of the most expensive homes in the city, the ones that we are counting on to generate future tax revenues. And in many cases, I'm not talking about my home now, in many cases, there are almost no sidewalks. What I, what I would just like to say tonight, and because there are just too many details, is I would ask, like to ask the city council to postpone the nice-to-do but not immediately urgent projects like the two new schools, and to consider that we have to provide basic services. We have stopped flushing fire hydrants. My own home is 1,200 feet from the sidewalk, I have a private side, a private fire hydrant. Deputy Chief Moran, seven years ago, said, "Stephen, you have to have that flushed every year, otherwise it'll get all clogged with debris and it won't be usable." There was a forest fire on my property years before I bought it. It's a 12-acre property. If a lightning, if there's a lightning strike that hits a tree, there won't be water available. And I have 17 abutting homes. Consider what happens to property values in Ward 7 if 17 homes are destroyed or damaged or look out on a burnt forest. And rather than think Stephen is hysterical, take a ride on I-41 to East Hampton, and you'll see the side of that mountain has been defaced by a recent forest fire. I don't know when it happened, it didn't look like that when I left six years ago. So I would just say, we have to consider, before we start bonding $55 million as our share of schools, and a new swimming pool, we have to do basic services first and set priorities. I haven't seen anyone talk about priorities. I haven't seen anyone talk about fulfilling the mayor's request four years ago that we have major urban renewal in the area that he called blighted around the Lynch School. I haven't seen a proposal given to the, to the architects for the new middle schools suggesting that while the Lynch School may be too small and may not have enough land for expansion, we have an opportunity, using eminent domain, to take over Riordan's, to take over Motel 6, and probably the bank would be willing to sell too. I actually spoke to Riordan, and he wasn't hostile. I said, "Would you consider retiring or being relocated?" And he said, "All depends on how much." Now, that's a starting point. Okay, so I'm just saying, guys, step back. I, I just want to just close by saying, I read the assessor's projections that next year we're going to have an increase in tax revenues due to rising property values. I think he's incorrect. Everything I've read has said that the rate of increase for residential real estate is slowing down, and what happens to a $200,000 house is not going to, that pays maybe $3, $3,500 a year in property taxes. It's going to be very different with the higher-priced properties because their real estate taxes are no longer deductible from federal income tax. I am, I am expecting the, the value of my own property to decline over the next few years. And this is a reality that we have to face. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. So that ends public comment. There's a motion to go to 18C. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 18C. From the Committee on Ordinance, was referred in order that the City Council amend the sewer rate, adjusting the deficit in the sewer budget. Have considered the same, recommended that the order be referred to the full committee without a recommendation, signed off by three members. Counselor Bacon.
Mr. President, in committee, we had debate and we received a lot of detailed information from Superintendent McManus. There were a couple of motions made relative to the rate. None of the motions succeeded in committee. And in an effort to have it be possibly addressed, we did vote to send it out to the full council if there was an appetite and an opportunity to come to agreement on a change in the rate. And that was by majority vote of the committee.
All right, so it was recommended without, it was sent out without a recommendation. The order is that the City Council amend the sewer rate ordinance, adjusting the deficit in their sewer budget. Let me just, there is a, can I just see it? So from the Ordnance Committee, December 11th, Sewer Rate Additional Information from Mike McManus. There is a second page, impact to various user groups, and it gives numbers with regards to that. Does everyone have a copy or does not have a copy? If you don't...
Mr. President, if I may, as a point of information, it's on our agenda tonight from the superintendent, but we haven't received it yet, and I don't see a copy on my desk. I did get an email.
All right, so we'll have Ryan go make copy so you have the numbers in front of you.
We should receive it.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to.
Before we take up the rate.
But he's going to need a copy so you have something to reference. So on that, we can make a motion...
Motion to lay it on the table and proceed out of order to 18A.
All right, so motion is to lay on the table 18C and go to eight, first on that. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 18A. Committee on Ordnance was referred to special permit application from Boston Bud Factory. Has conditions, recommended that the application be approved with the following conditions. One, that the owner of the building always pay commercial property taxes to the extent allowed by federal, state, and local during the special permit. Item two, that the business retain a minimum of 30% of Hoyoke residents for non-security jobs. Three, that hiring preference be given to security personnel that were retired Hoyoke police officers or are retired members of another police department now living in the city. Four, that there be no marijuana consumption on the site. Number five, that there be no deliveries of retail or medical marijuana from the site to individual homes, residences, or people. Six, that the applicant provide an updated plan showing the correct lighting scale. And seven, that the applicant shall provide traffic patrol should traffic impede flow recommended by HPD. Counselor Bacon.
Mr. President, so I have two amendments to offer under five. I've been offering this on each special permit, that the retail be described further as recreational, because that's what we commonly refer to it as. And in the public hearing, the applicant did agree to follow recommendations of the engineer because there were a number of concerns raised relative to traffic mitigation, parking, ability of the adjacent businesses to do business. So the applicant said that they would agree to comply with a communication and recommendations from the city engineer. And earlier in the agenda, we're skipping around, so we're not getting things in and order, but there is a communication from our engineer, Robert Parent, relative to this application and another application. And he stipulates in that correspondence of December 14th, a number of items relative to traffic plans before any retail recreational marijuana begins. And so the applicant did stipulate that they would accept that as a condition, knowing that it would be coming after the ordinance committee meeting.
So item 11?
Item eight.
Item eight.
As a condition that the applicant shall be in compliance with a communication from the city engineer.
I have 11 from Robert Parent, city engineer, special permit application for Boston Bud.
Be received?
That's 11, not eight, just to be clear. So...
I'm sorry?
It's communicating... Oh, oh, I thought you wanted to take up the communication to then add it in as condition eight.
Yes. Correct.
All right.
Correct, yes. I'm sorry, we were talking about two different things.
All right, so motion would be to suspend rules and take up item 11 with this, which is the communication from the engineer? Is that what you're asking, Counselor?
Yes.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So communication 11 is from Robert Parent, city engineer regarding the special permit application, of which he gives two requirements or stipulations with regards to traffic. Motion is to receive that communication?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So then we're going to take 11 and add it in as a condition to 18A as number eight?
Correct.
And the motion would be that we add in the, it's the engineer's report with regards to the traffic.
Along with the amendment to add recreational, to retail in number...
So five is to strike out retail and put in recreational?
Or add, just add, it doesn't matter, you can add recreational.
So add recreation. And then adding number eight as a condition, which is the recommendations from the engineer report.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those are the two amendments with regards to this one.
Yes, and then it was the recommendation of the committee that the City Council grant the special permit with the noted conditions.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so for 18A, the motion, we did approve the amendment, so it would be to receive and a...
To receive and approve the special permit.
And approve the special permit, of which we'll need, Counselor McGivern.
Just under discussion, Mr. President, I received the communication. I just note, though, it was not discussed during the public hearings. Has the applicant been notified of this communication and these additional amendments?
Counselor Bacon.
The applicant was present at the ordinance committee meeting and agreed to abide by the letter from the superintendent of Public Works and the engineer in order to move forward with the special permit.
Thank you.
All right, so motion is to approve the special permit with the added-on recommendations that were approved as amendments. Clerk is going to call the roll. We're starting, by the way, it's Counselor Bartley, we start with you first today.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Lowndes?
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the special permit on 18A and the communication.
Continue out of order to 18B.
18B. Committee on Ordnance was referred, a special permit application from Serge to operate MME, MMD, RMRE, following conditions, that the owner of the building always pay commercial property taxes to the extent by federal, state, local law. During the special permit, that the business retain a minimum of 30 Hoyoke resident, 30% of Hoyoke residents for non-security jobs. That hiring preference be given to security personnel that are retired Hoyoke police or retired members of another police department now living in Hoyoke. That there shall be no marijuana consumption allowed onsite. That there shall be no deliveries of retail medical marijuana from the site to individual homes, residents, or people. That the applicant shall provide traffic patrol should traffic flow impede regular traffic. Committee on Ordnance was referred, that it was, that was C, so this was recommended, I don't have the order from Ryan. Recommended to approve, Counselor?
We don't have a signature, just, yeah, move it out of committee. Motion to remove from committee?
So this is B. Give me one second, let me see how Ryan's in back making comments. So this has only one signature.
Counselor Burgos, did you sign the committee jacket?
Counselor Anderson Burgos, are you looking to sign the committee jacket? It would still only have two signatures out of the three needed.
Yeah, it's awful.
I don't know. I'm not gaining that much weight. On orders? I know, but why? Why? I don't know either, they just approved the other one.
No, they, they didn't sign it. So 18B, which is the one I just read, it only has two signatures, Counselor Lisi, Counselor Anderson Burgos, Bacon, Bartley, and Roman have that signed.
Motion to pull out of committee.
So it's still in committee, motion is to pull from the ordinance committee. It was seconded. All those in favor?
Under discussion.
Up, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Mr. President, with all due respect, we spent an hour on this in ordinance committee. We had vigorous debate relative to this. The conditions that were voted out of committee have been the conditions that we have put on every applicant relative to this. And for some reason, it was stated in committee and stated to me tonight, I only voted to get it here so that we can change the conditions for this one unique applicant. And so we will certainly abide by the will of the body, but this has had good debate, it's had good input. This is untested business. We have our engineer giving us communication, I'm not sure if everybody's even had time to read it, saying that this is untested business, we do not know the impacts, we do not know how this is going to affect the butters, et cetera, et cetera. And we have been told that it's very easy for people to come in and amend a special permit. The disagreement in committee that could not move it was over being equitable to each marijuana applicant. So I ask my colleagues not to vote this out of committee. If the committee is willing to stand by its vote that got it to the committee, I would happily sign the jacket. But that is not the case. So I will yield to the will of my colleagues, but I hope that you will not set this precedent because I believe it undermines the work of the committee. And we have, there are three members of the committee who show up consistently, faithfully, and timely. And there are two who show up intermittently and often late. And there are most of the counselors who don't come to the committee meetings at all. This is a heavy working committee, and I ask the counselors to respect the work of the committee. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi, and then Counselor Bartley.
Thank you. Just so everybody's clear, the only way to move the order out of committee, because we had a two-two body and we were failing at every turn to be able to move this applicant forward, despite the fact that they provided the city the most complete and comprehensive application that we have seen yet, and they were very professional and they're ready to get moving on their special permit. They're actually one of the few applicants who actually is already licensed by the Cannabis Controlled Commission. So the dispute is around whether or not we should allow this applicant to have access to deliveries in the city. And what's been made clear is that some members of the ordinance committee were working off of an understanding of an old version of our ordinance as opposed to the new ordinance, which this body passed, which does allow for deliveries in the city. It does allow for deliveries in terms of the state legislation. And so therefore, we cannot prohibit, I want everybody to really understand this, we cannot... It does allow for deliveries in terms of the state legislation. And so therefore, we cannot prohibit, I want everybody to really understand this, we cannot prohibit deliveries from coming into the city. So either we allow a local company to deliver to local people so that we could gain the revenues from our host community agreement from a local business, or we turn those revenues away because other communities, other businesses located in other communities will be delivering to our city and making revenue off of our residents. It is true that we have not allowed this in the past. However, nobody has really explicitly asked for it. And if there is somebody who would like to amend their special permit and go after the retail, I'm sorry, the medical marijuana delivery, then it is an easy process to make that amendment. What I'm asking for tonight is that we move this business forward according to the letter of the law that we all wrote and passed. They came with this application for deliveries in the city because our ordinances that we all passed allows for that provision. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna, let me be very brief.
I got it, I got it. Isn't it the same?
Ninety-five percent of it, I have to do. But every single other applicant we've had reports, every one. It said no deliveries. Every single one. So, yes, I guess you could argue that somebody could come in from outside and deliver something, but I think it's important that the city polio establish its own ordinances relative to all aspects of marijuana, not just one or two. As we said at the start of this process a couple years ago, it was a brave new world, and we did a pretty thorough job in our ordinances, in that committee, in the committee work. I think now that we have an unyielding applicant that insists upon having deliveries, fine. If our ordinance says deliveries, but we, it just, there's one line, there's no regulation relative to it. Let us take, let us be, let's take the time calmly, coolly, rationally in committee. Let's figure out what the regulations are. If there are other communities that allow deliveries, we at least have a model to work off of. But we don't, we don't even have anything to that effect. So, that's the reason I didn't sign the jacket, because I knew the motion was gonna come and we were gonna have to have the debate in the floor on deliveries. And this isn't the place. The place is in committee where the hard work is done. And I would just ask, not as a point of personal privilege, just out of our respect for the work that the committee does, we need two-thirds to move it out of committee now. I would just respectfully request my colleagues here to refrain from taking that vote. We'll send it back to committee. The chair lady has a tremendous job of running the committee fair, thorough, and I know she'll take it up in a timely fashion. And I think at that point, we can, we can calmly look at it at that, at that time. So I ask for your discretion, waiting a short period of time for something as monumental as this, a change that is, no other applicant has been allowed delivery, none. No one, not in the city of Hoyoke. And now we have to make one exception on the fly. I don't think that's the best way to do it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Bacon, then Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would further note that when it became evident that this would not move out of committee during our meeting, that the applicant was directly asked, do you prefer that it move out of committee to the full council so you can get your special permit for the three major items? Or do you want it to remain in committee so we can further debate the matter relative to the deliveries and what the language is or isn't in our ordinance? And the applicant requested that it be forwarded with the 95%. So ironically, out of a desire to make an exception, the applicant is actually being held up by this motion. If the maker of the motion would withdraw the motion, I would sign the jacket and we could pass the three things that the applicant is seeking.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yep, thank you. I'd just like to know, I mean, it didn't move out of committee on a 2-2 tie. The fifth person from the committee isn't here and is gone and will not be back again. Alright, so let's all be clear on that. And that's the only reason it didn't move out. As far as the, no other applicant has asked, we've put the stipulation on them for no home delivery, but none of the others have requested it. This is the first one that's requested home delivery. The, and as far as the home delivery goes, it's strictly for medical marijuana. This isn't gonna be delivered like pizzas or Chinese food or, you know, take, a home takeout service. This is for medicinal marijuana. Are we gonna, are we gonna sit here, and I don't even wanna talk about the economics which has been brought over of losing money to another community that's already home delivering? Are we gonna say if somebody's got diabetes, they can get home delivery on insulin, but if somebody's got epilepsy, they can't get home delivery? We're gonna, we're gonna decide which illnesses can get their medicines home delivered? I don't think that's right.
Anyone else? Alright, so the motion is, oh, Counselor Anderson Burgos, sorry.
You know, I always hear that we need to support our businesses, especially those investing in Hoyoke. And I feel that this is just another bump in the road for, for businesses, showing how we do, how we do business here, right? I was speaking to a business owner who's currently doing business in Hoyoke, and he's told me of the mishaps and the hoops and everything that he had to go through just to have a business here in Hoyoke. And if we need more businesses, this is just another bump in the road. This is just expressing and showing how we're making it difficult for businesses here in Hoyoke. I think, you know, I'm really urging all of my colleagues here to support this and, and let's not make this more difficult than it already is. We spent hours, it seemed like, in ordinance, and we couldn't figure out which ordinance. And it was an embarrassing, embarrassing moment for me. I'm like, one saying, you know, somebody's saying, this is what the ordinance say. The other one's saying, this is what the ordinance say, while the business owner is just staring at us and we can't figure it out. So then it turns out that the, the actual up-to-date ordinance is to allow it. And just like every, Lisi and Sullivan said, this, these, this business here is the only business that had asked for it. All the other ones didn't ask, so it was not a problem for them. This is the one business that did. Are we gonna allow other marijuana companies to deliver to our Hoyoke residents? Or are we gonna allow a home-based business delivered to our residents in Hoyoke? You got, we all need to come together. We have to support our businesses. We have to come together on this. And I urge you all, please.
Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, hey, thank you. This is obviously very new to all of us. So I, you know, I'm not gonna pinpoint, you know, he said, she said, this said, this committee. That doesn't matter to me because we're all in the same boat here. This is all new to all of us, and so we're all getting our feet wet. And I do also applaud businesses coming into the city of Hoyoke because that's certainly a good thing for us, but it's also a good thing for them as well. You know, as, as my colleague and friend was talking about delivery, I was just thinking how Uber came out, now they have Uber Eats. Now, I wish I was on the ground floor of Uber pot delivery because I could probably be a lot wealthier. I'm not sure if these are the, if this, I mean, if we're gonna pass this tonight, if we're gonna vote on this. I do have questions regard to safeguards. I do have questions on, you know, is the delivery person, is he gonna have some sort of background check? Is he gonna have to have a certain license? What kind of protections are made for his protection? Because he'll be driving around with a lot of medical marijuana grade. You know, what are those infrastructures? How are they gonna be put in place? What is the prescription? How is that going to be checked? How, how is a person gonna be, you know, if I'm driving and I'm doing delivery, I don't think we allow alcohol at delivery, do we? You do? I don't know that. So I'm not sure if that's, I'm not sure if we should, I'm not sure if we should have the city solicitor come and approach. But I have about 12 different questions. And I'm not sure if this is the place for it or if, or how we would handle this.
Counselor Presnehen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple things. I don't think this is the place to debate whether or not this should go up. It should go back to committee. And any chairperson respects another, you know, a chair or a co-chair asking it, that goes back to committee. It wasn't voted out of the jacket. I mean, but I just, I just wanna remind people that there's been many businesses that have come across our table. There was a Walmart, there was a Home Depot, there was a casino. I mean, we could go on and on and on. So, whether or not, if you're gonna say you're business friendly, then you're gonna be business friendly across the board for everything. There may be some people that think gambling is as bad as marijuana smoking, right? But for some reason, everyone's for it now. But when people, when we had a multimillion-dollar operation that could've come into the city, nope, we can't allow that. We can't allow, we can't allow gambling. That, that's wrong. It's wrong. It'll destroy the fabric of our community. But, let's have marijuana growing like, like no tomorrow. So I mean, I just wanna remind everyone, if you're gonna be business friendly, you're gonna be business friendly across the board. And I think that really has to come from Economic Development Office, Developing Economics, Gary Rome, how many hoops did this guy have to go through? Talk to any business owner that comes into the city of Hoyoke, how they have to be vetted out is disgraceful. It's disgraceful. I mean, it, so I, I find it, I find it ironic that it's certain businesses, and believe me, we all know that the Marijuana Corporation was funding a lot of counselors' campaign funds. So it's just, it's just ironic that this is, this is a fine deal. Perhaps if other corporations like Walmart had been putting money in everybody's coffers, we'd have a Walmart where Gary Rome is right now. But that didn't apparently happen because they were shut out of Hoyoke. Look across the street in Chickaby. Look at all the business they have, Home Depot, Walmart, every restaurant that you could possibly imagine. Nobody says, well, why is everybody out of Hoyoke? Why are they driving to Chickaby to go to eat? Because Chickaby says, come to us. We'll take care of you. What do you want? We got an Economic Development Office, very friendly planning department. You'll have one meeting, you'll be all set. Talk to the attorneys that have to come in front of the planning board. Oh my goodness gracious. They go to any other community, it's one meeting. They go to, they come to us, it's 15 meetings. And guess who's, guess who's forking out the dough for all this? The business. So I mean, let, if we're gonna be pro-business, let's be pro-business. But, to your point, Counselor Bacon, it wasn't signed out of the jacket. You know, if there's some stipulation about delivery, let's vet it out, not here.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on a personal, quick note, just wanted Counselor President to know that Mike Place on says hi. Mr. President, I, I, medical marijuana and delivery, I don't, I have, and I'm a counselor that goes to a lot of the ordinance committee meetings, and I appreciate the amount of work they do. I've always said they've been the workhorse of the, until DGR came along, the workhorse of the city council. And I appreciate that, but even though it's not signed out of committee, it was voted out of committee. And I'm a little confused because I think the questions were asked, they were good questions, I think the responses were given. And now it's a question of what we agree with and what we don't agree with. The final vote is always up to the, to the full city council. If there's more work to be done, let it be done. But I don't see the more work. It's, it's a fairly simple question. There are shut-ins out there who need and want and desire and qualify for medical marijuana. To have it delivered to their doors, to me, is a service that this city should provide. And why not take advantage of the host agreement? If we, one of our distributors, one of our sales of medical marijuana, you know, would be the person that would deliver it, and we will get credit as, as a city for the, for part of the profit that that company is making. If there is something, you know, that needs to be done or more questions that need to be asked and answered, then I would just look to see what is the timetable, when's the next agenda, and when will be on the agenda? But I went to the meeting, and if Counselor Roman was sitting here, we'd be debating a motion, not procedure of whether or not we should be acting on this this evening.
Counselor Lisi, then Counselor Sullivan.
Thanks. Really briefly, I just wanted to see if I could take a stab at some of the questions that Counselor Leahy raised. I mean, there's great details about the delivery plan in the permit application, and the plan has been approved by the chief of police. The security plan for deliveries has also been approved. Again, because our ordinance says that deliveries are allowed, the applicant put together a very comprehensive and complete application, which included the deliveries. So, you know, in terms of being business friendly, I don't think that we have to be business friendly to every single one that comes knocking on our door because some businesses are a good fit for Hoyoke. Some businesses are not a good fit for Hoyoke. We have been really lucky and fortunate to kinda get ahead of the curve on the cannabis industry. It's not just one player or two players. It's, you know, it's been really clear that we have a model ordinance. Other communities are trying to borrow from our ordinance because the ordinance itself is super streamlined. People have a really easy time meeting the criterias that we set forth in the ordinance. What holds up these businesses is the crazy hoops that are created, in part, on planning board, but also in the ordinance committee. And in this body, when we go through these procedural, you know, gymnastics in order to move a business forward, again, a business that created a really wonderful, there was not one question left unanswered by our planning, our office of planning and economic development. So, I mean, I really think it's a disservice to our community. And this is how we get that reputation for being business unfriendly, when we create these unnecessary hoops. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yep, thank you. Again, as far as the medical delivery and any regulation we need, it's already mandated 105 CMR 725.110 by the state, already controls and allows for the delivery of medical cannabis. So there is rules and regulations in place. For the counselors that weren't able to watch it or catch up on TV, if you, in the presentation, as far as security goes, it's far better than any other type of delivery that you get for any other medical stuff. These delivery people will be wearing body cameras. The people receiving this stuff have to show up, have a prescription, and they have to show a positive ID. I mean, the list goes on. It's a shame everybody hasn't caught up with the packet, but they've done a great job. And as was stated, it's, this entire delivery plan as well has been approved by our police department.
Counselor Bacon, you'd be speaking for the third time?
Do I need permission?
Well, motion is allow a counselor to speak for a third time on the same issue. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Bacon.
I will be brief. There have been issues raised relative to the language in our ordinance for the things that the ordinance contemplated happening. You see very clear language. The whole point of a special permit by the city council is to make sure that the business is compatible with the area that it's going into, that the impacts of the business are contemplated relative to the surroundings that they're in, and we're in new territory. It is easy to amend a special permit in the future. The applicant indicated that their preference was that the city council move it forward with the conditions that have been read, rather than wait. So I think to be business friendly would to be, to do what the business asked, which was to grant the three permits. But, that's just me. Thanks.
Counselor Leahy, you'd be speaking for the third time.
No, I would, just a second, Todd.
Go ahead.
Quite, just question. So, I wasn't here, I was in Ireland during this. That's why I'm not up to speed on this. But I do wanna ask, if we don't vote on this tonight, what's the timeframe?
They have to go back to committee. They have to have a meeting to then vet that specific issue and come right back out. It'd be, in essence, the committee member taking it up. It'd be, in essence, the committee member taking it up.
Does this, is there any specific dates? Is there any specific timeframes that have to be followed, or is there?
I don't know, but Counselor Vakon, are there any time?
If I may, as a point of information, I had a meeting scheduled for January 8th. However, a majority of the body has communicated to the president that they wish to have the city council meeting on the 8th. So that has severely constrained the work of the Ordinance Committee. I will be, assuming the applicant can flex their time, I'll be starting the committee at 6 o'clock that night, but it's going to give us very limited time to get much done. But I'm happy to move it forward quickly, but I'm simply saying, the question was asked and answered at the committee meeting. Mr. Business, do you want the three out of four, or is the four so important, you want us to continue to debate it to see if you can get it now? Or do you want to move forward with the three major components, which are 95% of his business?
And having said that, how come we don't make a motion just to do that part of it?
Well, I said.
Well, that's, that's.
We have, we have two committee members that are refusing to sign it out of committee.
So, just for a heads up as to what's going on. Currently, the Ordinance Committee has referred out without a recommendation, the special permit, there's actually, it says the applicant shall impede the full, but there is recommended, there's no recommendation from the committee.
Right.
So.
It moved out with the.
There was a recommendation.
The recommendation.
It wouldn't be on the agenda if it wasn't a recommendation.
Joe, what's in front, what's on me, it's not typed up correctly. That's what I'm telling you.
But there was a recommendation made.
Which, to my understanding, was that be recommended without a recommendation. In essence, referred out without a recommendation.
No, it was referred out positively with the conditions listed, and two of the members have preemptively assumed that I was going to amend on the floor and refused to sign the committee jacket.
So, just to answer Counselor Leahy.
Just so we're all clear what's going on here.
So, 18B, because it's not written here correctly.
Right, and I said it at the committee meeting.
Is that it be referred out with the six conditions, of which.
I said preemptively.
Only two members of the committee have signed off on it. So the six conditions were the standard ones, of which one of the ones that is of contention is that deliveries be allowed for medical purposes only, not recreational. So, the six conditions are there, the standard ones that we normally put in. Only two members have signed the committee jacket, as we all know, that then remains in committee.
Okay.
By our rules.
Thank you, sir.
So the motion on the floor.
So now the motion, if there's no other discussion, is that we pull from committee to take final action on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Ayes have it.
Roll call.
Yeah, roll call. You can tell it's two thirds?
It's two, need a third for a roll call. Three members have not asked for a roll call. So, we will take up 18B, the Committee on Ordinance has referred a special permit application for 650 Boulay Street with the conditions that were read earlier, which is that the owner always pay commercial taxes, federal, state, and local law, that the business retain a minimum of 30% of Hoyok residents for non-security jobs, that hiring preference be given to security personnel, retired police officers, or those who live in the city of Hoyok, that there shall be no marijuana consumption allowed on site, that there shall be no deliveries of retail or medical, and would have to change that to recreational as well, medical marijuana from the site to individual homes, residents, or people, and that the applicant shall provide a traffic patrol in case it impedes traffic flow. Those are the conditions.
So what we're voting on is without the delivery?
That is what is in the report.
Okay, let's go.
Mr. President?
Counselor Vakon.
So, it's been pulled out of committee, and what would have been coming to the floor was the added condition that we discussed under the bud relative to the letter dated 1214 from our engineer and DPW relative to traffic studies, parking, et cetera. And the applicant said that they would agree to that.
It's both Amendment 7 and 8 that were from the bud?
So adding Amendment 7 from the engineer report, that we've already received the communication as a condition.
That would be eight.
I have six listed here, so it'd be seven and eight, that's how you want it?
Correct. Seven would be that the applicant shall provide traffic patrol should customer traffic impede the flow. That's the same as the bud had.
That's already on here, it's number six.
Already on there, it's six.
That's number six.
Okay, all right, then it's.
So number seven would be the, adding the engineer report, just like we did with the bud.
Correct.
On that amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That amendment is now in. Anything else?
Make a motion that we strike item number five.
Motion is.
Or Amendment number five.
Is to strike number five. Amendment number five.
Second.
And that was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Show of hands.
Show of hands, please.
The yeses?
The yes, you're voting to strike it. So five is stricken. I'd offer a friendly amendment that, if you strike it, correct me if I'm wrong, that only medical.
Make a motion to not allow deliveries for recreational.
Second.
And only for medical purposes.
Second.
Sure.
Everyone have that?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that would be five again, that only for medical purposes deliveries be allowed, not recreational or retail.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Counselor Leahy.
Is there a limit per month, or is it, is, I know, like, if save a child's an Adderall, you have to give a license, you can only get a specific amount of Adderall per month. And you have to forgive me, I'm not, I don't know the classes of drugs or, so is this similar to that?
It'd have to, you just can't.
I think, Mr. President, it's actually dictated by the prescription by the doctor.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so the motion is to approve the special permit with the two changes that we have amended. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Bertley?
No.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vakon?
No.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Tenyes, Tunes.
We have 18C that we laid on the table. We would like to take that back up. That is the sewer rate. Motion would be to take up, remove from table and take up the sewer rate, 18C. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You should have all received from Ryan the list, or actually a communication from Mike McManus, as well as the numbers associated with the sewer rate. Everyone had a chance to review that. All right, so the motion, so from the committee, the Committee on Ordinance was referred in order that the city council amend the sewer rate, adjusting the deficit in the sewer budget, recommended that the order be referred to the full council without a recommendation. Counselor Leacy?
Does the chair want to say anything first?
Counselor Vakon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we did have discussion and debate within the committee, and a couple of rates were proposed, and they did not pass in order to put them forth to the council, so it's an open field.
So I'd like to then.
Counselor Leacy.
Thank you. I'd like to amend the order and suggest that we go with a 165 rate with no minimums. So if you look on the second sheet in the packet dated, I'm sorry, it's the 165 increase, so yes, a 665 rate.
Third page.
What am I reading?
125 rate increase.
Yeah, sorry, mixed up my numbers, thank you.
Second.
So again, that's a 665 rate with no minimums. And if you look on the second page of the packet from December 11th in Table 2.
Guys, wait a minute, I'm a little bit. Where am I?
Is it not?
It's the letter from Mike McManus.
Oh, okay.
There's a September and there's a December.
December, so the December 11th one.
Four pages.
I don't have it, yeah. I think I passed it.
I have extras if you don't have it.
I don't think everybody has that.
No.
Juan's taking them all over here.
Typical Juan.
No, I already have that one.
That's the one?
This is the one?
Yeah.
That's not the one.
Thank you.
Thank you for looking out for me, Juan.
It's so hard to tie.
Customer distress.
Try so hard.
Yep, there's a December and a September.
Yeah, you want the December.
I got it, I got it. Thank you.
I know.
Mine's like this, it's a little like this.
You too.
Sorry.
I know, I'm going to work on that. That's my New Year's resolution.
Just for everyone's reference, and especially those at home, we received a communication from DPW with regards to the sewer rate, and the current rate is 5.40, so $5.40. The suggested increase would be by $1.25 to increase it to $6.65. If you look at Page 2 on the very bottom, that's where you'll find your information.
It's three different tables.
Yeah, I'm trying to get them to the number.
Thanks.
So, anything further, Counselor Leacy?
Yeah, so if everybody's on Page 2, I think the easiest place to start is Table 3, so the impact to all other residential accounts. So this is the majority of users in the city, and this is how it would impact them. So currently, we have a $5 minimum, which doesn't actually even reflect the current rate of $5.40, $5.40 per gallon. So we're thinking it makes the most sense to just eliminate the minimum altogether and charge everybody for the exact use that they would be receiving at their homes at a rate of 665. So the average residential bill would go to about $471.50, so again, in the middle of Table 3, the bolded third line down, which is about an $88 increase for the entire year. So over the quarter, it's about $22 per quarter. There was the possibility of going to a 10,000 gallon minimum at different rates, and that would help to provide revenue for the infrastructure. But when you look at Table 2, the folks who are currently paying a minimum bill of $5, the increase is really astronomical for them. They're going from a $5 bill to a $256 bill overnight, and we felt that that just, that wasn't fair. So the best way to proceed would be going with a 665 rate across the board and charging people for what they're actually using. When you look at the impact of that rate for commercial accounts, you could see that if you do the minimum, the 10,000 gallon minimum at that same rate, at the current rate, then you actually aren't getting, I guess, in some ways, the bang for your buck, because the commercial users are already hitting that 10,000 gallon mark. And so we actually do better across the board with the no minimum and 665 rate. A couple other things to note is that if you turn to Page, sorry, Page 1, you'll see like the total sewer fund cost, this is the bottom line, the bottom section of numbers, but the top line there is really 8,000, sorry, $8,215,000. So it takes, it costs $8 million to run our sewer system. We collect most of that, except for about, on average, $800,000 a year, which becomes the deficit that we have been funding through the general fund, through taxpayer dollars year after year after year. This is causing a huge strain on our budget. And by setting a tax rate for, I'm sorry, by setting a sewer rate, we're able to actually create a user rate that reflects what people are using, as opposed to plugging up that deficit with the general fund dollars. Really, when we're taking money away from the general fund to plug up this sewer deficit, we're borrowing money from schools, police, fire, DPW. And I know Joe can go on and on to tell you how that hurts our city services and what our residents receive. But again, at this rate, we're going to be able to plug the deficit and start to set a rate that really reflects what it costs to operate our sewer system, and put a little bit of money aside for some of these big infrastructure projects that are coming down the road to plug up the CSOs and make them whole, that are coming, they're really just two, two or three years down the road. I think that's it for me for now, thanks.
Counselor Vakon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So a couple of things about the economics. I looked back at our free cash last year, and when we certified it, we had, I think, $167,000 in the sewer fund, so it wasn't in the negative. This year, in our free cash certification, they're saying we have to fund a $32,000 deficit. We have, for the first year, gotten the collections up in the department. If we have been moving funds out of the general fund into the enterprise fund, we should have been taking a vote in this chambers every single year to move that money. I don't remember ever taking a vote to move a half a million dollars into the sewer enterprise fund. I don't think any of you do, because I don't think it's happened. But what has happened is we're funding a half a million dollars of unbudgeted health insurance payments for the second year in a row, and we're funding some other big expenses to fill that gap. Now, when I asked the question on the economics, the rate of 125, which I will never vote for in this chambers, is not only going to cover the deficit, it's going to generate $1.4 million of money. Now, I've filed an order because I would like to see us fund our debt in a separate stabilization fund, so it's not sitting in the enterprise fund, so that if we have extra money that's generated through fees or fines or anything else, we can throw it into a debt stabilization fund. But my understanding is that we're going to generate anywhere from 600,000 to 700,000 extra dollars with this sewer rate. Where's the plan? Where is the plan that if we increase the sewer rate to the people who've been paying it, that all the extra money in excess of what is needed, that might amount to $700,000, is going to go to pay the debt? And when people talk about that we're robbing from one department to fund another department, there's only one group of people paying the freight, and it's the taxpayers. It's coming out of every taxpayer's wallet. And you heard the people at the microphone tonight, the CPA, the water rate, the sewer rate, the property rates, and maybe a bond override. So my position is that we should increase the sewer rate as little as possible, set up a bond fund to deal with the CSO and the bonding requirements that we have, and any excess monies that we have, coming out of either the regular stabilization that could go into bond, debt support would be used for that, so that we stabilize and strengthen the financial infrastructure of our city. That order is sitting in Finance Committee, I'm sure it will be taken up when there's time, it's a complex matter. But in the meantime, I do think the sewer fund should pay for itself, but the only deficit we saw sitting in front of us tonight, when we balanced the budget, and President or somebody else can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, is 32 some odd thousand in the sewer fund. Now, I'm not going to argue the money that talks about the expenses of the sewer count and what is budgeted for the sewer count, but the budget and the actual are two different things. So it's a very complex issue, I think we need to do a lot of work on it. But in the meantime, I would offer an increased rate to the sewer fund of 25 cents to make sure that on our operations, we are covering the expenses in the enterprise fund, but that separately from that, we do what Cinder has advised us to do, which is to set up a plan. And as somebody at the mic asked us to do, prioritize what we're spending our money on, and dealing with our infrastructure matters before we're spending money on new things. So I do offer the 25 cents as an amendment to the sewer fund if.
Second. That was seconded.
Thank you.
Still under discussion is Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are things I agree with, and there are things I disagree with respectfully. We all understand that we are taxpayers, and most of us, not all of us, also pay for sewer usage rate fee itself. The sewer department was not always an enterprise fund. When it was first created in the 60s, and when the rate was adjusted by the DPW over the years, it was somewhere maybe 20 years ago or so that this council voted to make it an enterprise fund, which even though we own the gas and electric, even though we own the water department, most important, the reservoirs and the dam, we not only own the sewer department, but the enterprise fund connects it to the general budget. And that's been the issue that I've been most concerned about, especially over the last four to five years. The reason being is, as a taxpayer, my property tax, I hope, goes to the. The reason being is, as a taxpayer, my property tax, I hope, goes to the priorities that we need to, the services that we need to provide, and that would be police, fire, DPW, education, parks and rec, and down the line, in the best order that we can with the, with the amount of money that we have. And as a property owner, and I think a lot of property owners recognize, the sewer fund should operate on the rates that is paid accordingly. Is it the fairest system in the world? Absolutely not. But it's a system that we were given, and it's a system that we, for the moment, have to abide by. Now, when you look at, Counselor Leacy summed up the reason for the proposed increase. But the biggest reason to me is on page, page three of what we received tonight. And this, by the way, was given to the, the supplement given to the ordinance committee during the public hearing by the DPW superintendent. And at my urging and the council president's urging, we made sure, and our administrative assistant emailed this to everybody last Thursday. The, the most important thing to me is, is the big picture. And on page three, if you look at table number six, it's the historical sewer account deficit. We have talked about this till we're blue in the face over the last four to five years. It shows the operational deficit of the sewer plant itself. It averages over eight-hundred-thousand dollars a year. The projected deficit for fiscal year nine, two thousand nineteen is the nine-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars. That thirty-two thousand dollars is in addition to fiscal two thousand, in eighteen, I believe it was. But an answer to a question that was raised is, we receive, when we do the budget, the projected, we call it the cherry sheet, but we receive the projected revenues of the city, we receive the projected deficits of the city when we, when we begin the budget process with the mayor in June prior to July one. For the last four years, a deficit number has been entered onto that sheet accordingly to what was projected for the sewer fund to be in arrears. And accordingly, two thousand fourteen through two thousand eighteen, we see what happened. Some of them are higher than what was projected, some of them are lower than what was projected. But again, eight-hundred-thousand dollars times five, four million dollars. Think about that. That's four million dollars in free cash we would have had to spend over the last four years. And again, we're looking at an operational deficit of close to a million this year, and right now, we're looking at free cash that may hit two-hundred-thousand dollars by the time we take our votes this evening to balance the budget. If we raise the sewer fee this evening according to the first motion on the floor, we free up one of those votes by close to seven-hundred-thousand dollars, which means we have an additional seven-hundred-thousand dollars for this year in free cash. That is the big picture. We talk about, and I think we all have our different ways of going about balancing the budget and recognizing a budget and when it's balanced and when it's not balanced. And we make budget cuts, but I've said this over the last three years, we don't make cuts to the actual operations of the city. Those cuts are looming right now, and they're called layoffs. There is nowhere else in the budget to cut but personnel. If we don't recognize, Cinder told us, we need to take advantage of the revenue we need to operate this city, then we, we are obligated to make those decisions and by filing ordinances to reduce the amount of policemen, reduce the amount of firemen, reduce the DPW. It isn't easy because when you reduce people who have an occupied position, they collect unemployment, you have to reduce another person to pay for the unemployment for both of them. So we have the opportunity with the big picture to correct a wrong. The sewer department should not be operating in the black. They should be operating in the black, just like...
That's what I say, Joe.
Someone's listening to me. Thank you, Counselor Leacy.
I'll pay attention to you, but I heard that one.
They should be operating in the black, not in the red. And whether we have sewer or don't have sewer, it should not be at this amount coming out of our property tax on an annual basis. Not only can we correct that, we can help ourselves for the rest of the year, we can do what is right, and we can, again, fight to get through the year and provide those services, which I think, at least most of my, my neighbors and most of my constituents want in terms of, again, the police, the fire, DPW, parks and rec, and so on, education. So I, that's why I favor the sewer increase because it's an opportunity to correct at least a five-year wrong of allowing this, allowing this department to operate in the red. We can correct it. We're still going to have a tight year financially, but it gives us the opportunity to, as Cinder said, help ourselves in terms of revenue because that's the opportunity to recognize what the Department of Revenue said is stop deficit funding. That includes the sewer department, when the Department of Revenue wrote that letter. It includes, don't let the sewer department run on a deficit. If we remove the enterprise connection, there is no way without voting to put money over there to save the sewer department. Then the state steps in. So let's correct it, let's go in the right direction, and continue to figure out what's best for all of us in terms of the services we provide, but more important, how we pay for them.
All right, just one for people at home. Currently, we're trying to discuss the sewer rate, and there's been two recommendations, one for a dollar twenty-five, one for twenty-five cents to raise it. It currently is at five forty, so five dollars forty cents. Some numbers have been thrown around, so I don't want to leave confusion. If we pass a rate tonight, then we can send out the bills in January. That has been confirmed. Therefore, we can collect revenues from the new rate, whatever that is. I'm not telling you what, how to vote. Therefore, whatever that number comes in, you got to figure it's the rest of the fiscal year. The projection is if you go to six sixty-five as the new rate, increase it by a dollar twenty-five, then that's projected to be about a one-point-four-million dollars, one-point-five, give or take. Therefore, about half of that is going to come back in to then go to free cash, the general fund, however you want to call it, to then use for other things, i.e., you have a fireman's contract, fireperson's contract, men and women, of which that's roughly going to cost us about four-hundred-thousand, depending on the numbers. These are things that we have to add into the budget because once approved, you got to pay for it. So with regards to the five forty, since I've been here when this started, the rates have been going up prior to the council taking over because every time a rate went up, we got the phone calls. Why'd the rate go up? No communication back to us. So therefore, Kevin Jordan did file the order to have us take control of it, which then we saw, we were seeing people rip the bill in half and not pay the sewer. Which then this council worked very hard together, took some time to do a collection process, of which shut off the water. Now, people are paying. That's relatively new. What number that can be overall and how many people pay ninety, a hundred percent, that has to be factored in. But do you need an increase in the rate in order to pay for the cost? Yes. Do you go to the supermax of one dollar twenty-five cents or something in between? That's what we're discussing now for people at home. Counselor Sullivan was next.
I just want to say, we need that supermax. The thing's running at a deficit. We've had things imposed on us by the federal government. It's got to support itself, and there's no way around that. It's just priced too low. It's that simple.
Anyone else? Counselor LeBron Martinez?
This is a very tough vote for me as I've been getting calls and people concerned, especially those who are on limited income. And my question is, do we have to go completely to the one-twenty-five or the twenty-five code? We do half and incrementally do next?
You could. It's a great question, Counselor Martinez. You could vote tonight, you can make an amendment to say seventy cents, sixty cents, of which that one's approved, if it were approved, collections come in, we see where we stand with regards to the overall budget. If it's still not enough, we, once again, can take up another rate change and add it in slowly to the taxpayer or dump it on them right now. So you do have that option. Absolutely, you do.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McGivern and then Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Just, just two more things. One of the things is, if you look at item number forty-four on our agenda this evening, there is an incoming request for eight-point-nine-million dollars for the Jackson Street CSO project. The big project that we did, that we're still paying for in Berkshire Street, is only about forty-five percent of CSO problems that we have to correct in this city under the mandate. This is the next probably, would be the second biggest one. There's been some small ones done within the budget. This will be the second biggest one that we've done to date since the federal mandate that we have to clean up the, the overflow of untreated sewage into the Connecticut River. We have been good, in good fortune with the federal government to date, although the mandates and the, the letters still keep coming. If at some point we fall out of good fortune, we go back into that scenario where we could be fined up to ten-thousand dollars a day. And if you think the sewer budget is in the deficit now at ten-thousand dollars a day, our whole city will go under very quickly in terms of our regular budget because of the enterprise fund. Not saying it's going to happen, I'm not threatening that that's part of it, but that's something I think we should know and we should keep, keep in consideration. I cannot vote for the, the First Amendment for twenty-five cents because that doesn't come anywhere near close to what we're trying to accomplish here. Again, you know, get us some free cash to get through the year to correct the problem in the sewer budget itself. So therefore, I'll be voting for the original amendment offered, or original rate offered by Counselor Leacy.
There's, oh, Counselor Bacon, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I would just note that if we pass a modest increase tonight, there is nothing to prohibit us from putting that into effect. Instead of hitting people with a really hard increase on top of the CPA, on top of their property values going up, which we know is going to hit them in July, what I'm looking to do is to start it out with a reasonable, modest increase. We can come back in a quarter and do another increase. But it seems like we're having a discussion about two things at the same time. Because to accomplish the balancing of the enterprise fund, we need something like seven-hundred-thousand. But we're talking about charging people a sewer rate to raise one-point-four-million, seven-hundred-thousand, of which will be used for all things other than the sewer fund. So I think we need to be really clear that if we are increasing the sewer rate, we should keep talking about apples and apples. And I would just urge my colleagues to step in these rate increases. It is on us that we didn't do anything for a long time, but I just think it's onerous to the people to get hit with all these things. They've been hit with a lot in the last few months, and they already know what's coming in the next few months. Thank you.
Counselor President.
Yeah, real brief. I, I agree with Counselor Bacon. I think it should be in increments. I think that we've seen cities hall departments expand over these years, not decrease in manpower. The Health Department, the Building Department have all seen personnel raises. And when it comes to the budget, there's many councils that don't cut anything. I mean, I, I think that, you know, we, we have opportunities to cut the budget. You know, you have to understand the inner workings of City Hall very closely. There are many departments that unfortunately have, have expanded over these years, and it wasn't necessary to do that. You know, I mean, there's also, I hate to, I hate to say this word, there's also the Quinn bill that many people have been very in supportive over the years. There's a lot of money that we could talk about. But, you know, we don't, we don't cut certain things and we increase the, certain departments, and we give certain raises to certain people, and we buy certain trees in front of City Hall. Well, guess what? That all adds up. So I think that, you know, going to the, going to the taxpayer for an increase, I'm assuming people are going to be probably, I will, I will not be voting for an increase on, on property taxes tonight if that matter arises, but the CPA goes into effect this year, the sewer rate we want to hit them with, and we want to hit them with a tax increase. Well, I mean, what are we going to do? We just going to keep going back to the folks, say, hey, we, we need more, we need more, give us more, we're going to raise our taxes again? You know, you, you, let's increment it, let's see how well this whole proposal that has gone into effect where people aren't paying their sewer bill? Well, let's, let's pay, let's shut off their water. It's a great concept. The city of Springfield combined the sewer and water department, which seems to be not a good idea for the city of Hoyok, but other communities are doing it, and they've been able to shut off sewers. For years, they've been doing that. So let's see how shutting off people's water bills, because it's not a, it's always, the story is, it's always, ah, it's only twelve bucks or fifteen bucks. Well, it's not when you own three buildings that have thirty-five units in each building. It's not an eighty-eight-dollar increase for everybody. It's not an increase for the guy that owns a restaurant and a home, and his kid has a home in Hoyok. So I mean, you're talking about people's businesses and livelihoods here. So let's be very careful when we say seven-hundred-thousand dollars. It's not, whatever, it's not a big deal. We'll just raise everybody's taxes twenty bucks. Well, twenty bucks to some people is a lot of money, especially when they're running multiple units or multiple businesses or multiple homes. So let's be mindful. Increment it slowly. If the twenty-five cents isn't enough, let's go, let's look at it again in, in the next quarter. But let's see, as, as Mr. President pointed out, let's see how we're doing on this water shut-off to some of these people that aren't paying sewer bills.
Would there be a motion to go to sixty cents instead of the twenty-five, cut it in half? No? Okay. Counselor Sullivan.
Yep. As long as we're talking about increments, a dollar sixty-five could be just the first increment. I don't think anybody in this room's getting it. So I'll take you on a little graphic tour. What was mentioned earlier is what went on up off of River Terrace, all right? Our, our systems aren't being maintained, we don't have enough money to maintain the systems. We're not doing the proper preventive maintenance. If that had gotten any worse, we could have wiped out the whole north-south-bound Amtrak. How's that? We're dumping, I think it was a hundred gallons an hour, and it could have been more than that, of raw sewage into the Connecticut River. We haven't picked up a fine on that. We're very lucky. All right? And then Joe mentioned the ten-thousand-dollar-a-day fine if the, if the feds come down on us. This dollar sixty-five, we got to do this now and hope it's, that this isn't the first of many increments. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
On the, the twenty-five cent rate, or on any rate, the, one of the sheets that was passed out, I believe, this evening has some red highlighted what would happen. If we only increase the rate by twenty-five cent, the deficit remains at eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-two-sixty-six, which I would say, as terms of free cash, the only impact would be about a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars better. I, I think we have to keep in mind the big picture. The, Counselor, yeah, I heard what Counselor McGee said, and I just heard what Danny said. And what we were told on more than one occasion, since the shut-off process was implemented and allowed by the Water Department, implemented by the DPW, the collection rates have soared into the mid-ninety percent, which I think is what we all wanted, what we all hoped for. And even with the mid-ninety percent on the collection rates, and even with anything that was in the arrears, this is still the projected deficit of this year, nine-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand. It's an operational deficit. That's a big deficit for any department to run within the city of Hoyok. But unfortunately, again, this one is connected directly to the city budget, so the deficit gets wiped out by property tax as opposed to by a rate increase. The, the only thing I, I, you know, I'm, anybody's, you know, can propose a number on this chart, but to me, the, you know, the big picture is, I'm not sure what you said, Mr. President, if you said six sixty or sixty cents.
Well, it would get you to six. So sixty would get you to six dollars instead of six sixty-five.
So six would be the gain of about three-hundred-thousand dollars in free cash. Still making it kind of tight, but just, just so everybody has the red, red sheet, they know what they're doing or not doing for free cash.
All right, so the first, or the second motion that was seconded was to do a twenty-five cent increase. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Those would have it. Next would be the First Amendment, which was to raise it by a dollar twenty cents, is that what it was?
Dollar twenty-five.
Dollar twenty-five. And that was seconded. So on that rate, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Show of hands. Roll call.
We'd have to do a roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Three members have requested it. Clerk will call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the dollar twenty-five increase.
Hartley? Bresnan?
No.
Leahy?
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Nope.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Eight ayes, four nays.
At your vote, you approved the rate of one-twenty-five.
Six sixty-five for the rate.
Well, it'd be total of six sixty-five.
Um, I have a question, Mr. President.
Yep.
Does this affect our C I P shifts in any way?
No.
No.
All right, so next on the agenda. Can get back into order here.
We skipped. We skipped over two, which is laid on the table.
I hear nothing on that, so it stays on the table. Public comment is done. We're at Communications, which would be three, but I do believe we have the tax rate that people are here for as well. Would you want to proceed out of order?
No.
Yep, so tax rate would be thirty-eight. Order that the city council set the tax rate for fiscal year two thousand, well, actually, you'd have to balance the budget first, correct, Joe?
I believe so, Mr. President.
We have an order for that?
There's two, there's a few votes we have to take. I would ask, could we suspend the rules to allow the auditors to approach to give us the correct guidance on which votes to take?
Second.
We got two of them.
You guys are being too loud.
Well, there's, you're both on the payroll, the last I checked.
Give the microphone.
Or move the microphone, no? Why is the mic in there now? What? Maybe it's for...
So before the motion is to suspend the rules to allow the auditors to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Just one point to note, items forty-nine and fifty, due to the number change that we just approved on the rate, these would be given leave, actually not leave, to be, to deny. And then we have late files B and C with the adjusted numbers.
Right.
So forty-nine and fifty, the numbers have changed, so you have to take them up as a late file. With that, I'll turn it over to the auditors.
There are actually a series of orders that we would like you to approve. The first one is number forty-six, which is a motion to take seventy-five thousand dollars from the tax assessor's overlay and apply it to the tax rate setting. This is the, more of the excess funds from the Verizon case that was resolved last year. Last year, we voted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the overlay. This is the remainder that was in there that Tony is giving up. So we ask you to pass item number forty-six to begin with.
What are the other ones?
Okay.
Would you have it as a package?
Yeah, we're going to do it as a package.
The second would be one of the amendments, and I don't have B or C, I've got the actual amendment. Which is the?
This is the correct one to balance the budget.
Is the one that reads a transfer of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, forty-eight dollars from free cash to health insurance, special funds deficit, and sewer fund retained earnings deficit.
That's late file C.
Late file C.
Seven seventy-five, forty-eight.
Correct. And the third, I believe, is item number forty...
We have to transfer the...
Those are what is required to balance the budget. There's an additional order we would like you to pass, I believe it's number forty-three, and I will explain that. And that is the order, basically, to incorporate into the budget the cherry sheet assessments that the state levies on us. In years past, the city council hasn't ordered this to happen. It's something that the auditor has added to the budget. But this year, we had a problem about six months ago, when we found that we weren't going to be charged all of the cherry sheet assessment for charter school attendance. The Department of Education recommended that we make a transfer of those funds to the school budget, which the city council did. And then we found out at the end of the year, as we were closing, after we closed the books, our auditors told us that technically, the city council can't do that because they hadn't voted that as part of the budget. So the recommendation is going forward, from this year forward, we will always have the city council vote the cherry sheet assessment as part of the budget, so that should a change come up later in the year, you of your own power can vote a transfer among these accounts. And that is, that's been approved by the Department of Local Services. So we ask you to pass those three as a package, and that will balance the budget, and it will resolve that issue with the cherry sheet assessors.
There's a late file, B, free cash, one million, three, twenty-six, seven eighty-five.
We have to withdraw.
That's the late file, so that one you want leave to withdraw?
That was if we didn't pass a sewer increase.
Okay.
Oh.
So B is going to be to withdraw, so we'll leave that to the side. You have C, forty-three, forty-six. Those are the ones you're looking for.
What's the total tied on those?
So let's just go through it, so everyone's on the same page. Forty-three, from Counselor McGivern, that the following amounts be and are hereby appropriated as an amendment to the budget for fiscal two thousand nineteen, July one, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, by the departments for the purposes. Retired teachers' health insurance, three million, eight hundred and seven dollars and fourteen dollars, eight hundred and seventy dollars, fourteen dollars, nine thousand, sixty-two dollars for air pollution, ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars for R M V, renewal surcharge, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two forty-six for regional transit, seventy-two thousand, nine seventeen for special education, two million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, three twenty for school choice spending tuition, and twelve million, five sixty-one, two oh four for charter school spending tuition. That's forty-three. Forty-six is seventy-five thousand from the overlay account. And then late file C is free cash of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, forty-eight dollars, to health insurance, special fund deficit, sewer fund deficit. The health insurance is four eighteen, four seventy-four. The special fund is three hundred and twenty-three thousand, five ninety, and the sewer fund is thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Counselor McGee, after this is all said and done tonight, how much free cash do we have left?
Back to the auditors for that, because we just did everything else.
We should have about six to seven hundred thousand.
Six forty-eight?
Six forty-eight, the other auditor says, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, to be very precise.
I like her number better.
Any other questions? Counselor McGivern.
A question on item forty-three, Bellman. Item forty-three, I mean, I know we've talked about this in the past, and I understand it somewhat, but it's not, it's not going to make a difference on balancing the budget.
No. It's just, no, it just makes the budget, it may make our life more easier in the next six months if some of these accounts, if we need, if you need to make a transfer from some of these accounts because they're...
So my only question is, can we put it in committee and have some discussion and bring it back out and still vote on it?
It is, and it is considered an amendment to the budget. I don't know the rules about how late you can amend the budget.
I also have a question is...
I'd kind of like to have it all done in one package tonight, and then...
There are two orders that have come in under my name, which would amend the budget. And it's been a long time since we've had a amended budget presented to us, and I believe it's the mayor who always files the budget. Is there some guidance on that?
No, I have none.
So city councilors can amend the budget anytime they want?
I have no idea.
That's a trick question.
No.
So there's an honest answer. It's not critical that this happened. It is desirable.
I just would like to have a discussion, especially with the school department, because a lot of it involves the school department. And though some of us have known this has taken place over the years, recently, with the transparency of the, especially the business manager, Anthony Soto in the school department, and the receiver, acting superintendent, you know, we've learned a lot more about these items. And I agree, you know, we should have more say over them. It's kind of difficult to say, too, now, because the line items say has always been the school committee, not the city council. But with the school committee not able to vote on the budget, we've assumed a lot of the responsibility over this. But I just kind of would like to see it go to committee, Mr. President, and have a discussion and...
We haven't taken up anything as a package.
I understand. We just do separate votes on forty-three.
All right, so...
Motion to take up as a package, late file C with forty-eight.
First is, since it's a late file motion, would be to suspend the rules and take up final action on late file C.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay.
With that, you can now make a motion to take up as a package, C and forty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nope.
I just have it. I have a question for the assessor with regards to this. Make a motion to suspend the rules, ask the assessor to come in.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Tony, seventy-five thousand's coming from the overlay, and that's specifically for the Verizon?
Yeah, that was the rest of the Verizon judgment that we had put away, so...
How much is left in the overlay for, if there's abatements and stuff?
With this, four fifty, and then another two hundred, about six fifty.
How much was in there?
Roughly around two seventeen, two seventeen or whatever.
Two hundred and seventeen thousand?
Yes.
And it's now at, it'll be six fifty?
Well, we get four fifty for the beginning of the year, when the, you know, when you guys set the tax rate, and then whatever's left over minus the seventy-five.
Okay.
The overlay used to be by year. It's now combined.
Yeah, now it's all combined for every year, so it's easier to manage auditing purposes. It's easier also, but it's worked out fine, and, you know, it's just, we've been averaging four fifty a year for the past probably ten years.
So all we've taken out is the seventy-five and...
And the three fifty last year.
Okay.
And that, that'll be it for the Verizon settlement, which we, you know, the state won, and it was handed down to all the cities in town.
So we have enough just in case there's any abatements or anything?
Yeah, well, we can always get a surprise, you know, so...
Yeah, we did buy the mall one year, that's why I'm asking.
I know. Well, down the road, we'll have to deal with that, too, so, at some time.
All right. Anyone else? All right, so the item is forty-six and late file C, which was free cash, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, forty-eight dollars. Motion is to pass the first reading.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. You're taking up both items together. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for C and forty-six.
Hartley?
Yes.
Bresnan?
No.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Ten ayes, two nays.
What your vote, you approved those two orders. Back to the auditors. We did forty-six and late file C. Is there anything else you needed, or...
The, I will add, the mayor just informed me that if we do not pass item forty-three tonight, we cannot do it until next year.
And what's the implication or significance of can't doing it to next year?
Well, then, what's going to happen is if, if we underrun our, quote, spending, or our assessment for the number of charter school students, the number of students who go to charter schools, we will not be able to transfer the unspent dollars elsewhere in the budget. We just lose the money. And it will not, and we will miss our net school spending total, target. Because that's what we did this year. Because charter schools were not spending all the money, we took that money, we added it to the school's budget, so that the total spent on net school spending was the same. So if we lose this money, we can't transfer it this year, so net school spending will be down by that amount. We'll miss the target. Thank you. That's the implication.
Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Do we have correspondence on this that we can have copies of, or something that we can look at?
I have nothing.
This is, you know, the last-minute stuff. This is what we have been objecting to for two years.
Well, we didn't know this from the state until very recently. It was a long, drawn-out discussion with the state that we've had within the last few weeks.
But we do have email.
So...
Hold on, no back and forth, no back and forth.
Anyway, but we now know what to do?
Is...
Yeah, we're just following what other, some other cities in the state do, that's all.
Dr. Dreik here. Anthony Soto. Anyone in the hall? No, they didn't show up.
I don't care.
All right.
Can I?
Other than forty-three, you'd be all set for the budget?
We're all set now for balancing. The budget is now balanced.
So now we're ready to set the tax rate?
You may set the tax rate.
Okay.
Yes. We have all we need to communicate with the state tomorrow and get them to approve the budget balancing.
Counselor Barr Martinez.
So in regards to forty-three and having to vote tonight, so we can vote on it, and let's say it's not needed or used, it comes back to us?
No, I would, sorry, Mr. President.
Counselor McGivern, go ahead.
I would suggest we refer to committee on finance for a discussion.
Second. Okay.
Sorry.
Motion is referred to committee on finance, which was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's a finance forty-three. All right, so now to proceed out of order and take up thirty-eight from Counselor McGee. Order that the city council set the tax rate for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
Another question. So did anything that we just voted on regarding the budget affect the C I P numbers that are before us?
From what I was told, no.
Okay.
No change. Now, Tony was just here. I'm going to bring him back in. He's under the rules still. Tony?
Tony?
He's not leaving because we got to say...
Tony?
Maybe he ran.
Tony? He's always hiding out there. Come on in here.
All right. Question is, with all the passing of the sewer balancing the budget, has this impacted or changed your numbers on the shift?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
What you're voting on is the minimum residential factor, which is the second column on each sheet. So please state the minimum residential factor. It'll correlate to the tax rate, but that's what you are actually voting on.
So as we all know, the process is that counselors can select...
I have a question for Tony.
A shift. Tony, hold on. Counselor President has a question for you, before we go any further into the process.
Tony, did the assessed values of people's property go up?
Yeah, it went up.
So could, so I noticed that the current rate, and correct me if I'm wrong, the current rate that people are paying is not on this sheet?
Yeah, the current rate is nineteen...[1720.88]
Nineteen thirteen?
And thirty-nine.
All right. But it, it's on this tax rate option sheet.
Those are the brand new values.
Tony, you want to hit the mic, make sure it's on?
What do we look at here?
On the top.
Yeah, the, um, the, the current rate is not on there. This is going to be, those are the new values on the first sheet and the shift percentage you're voting on is the MRF. So it started, you know, I didn't put every number down there because it would go from, if, if there was no split rate, it would be twenty-five dollars. So that would be the, the zero percent for, if we're at a hundred percent.
So what are the ramifications of keeping the tax rate at the same rate that it is now?
Well, that's, that's, I mean, if you kept it the same right now, you're going to have the, uh, CIP go over forty and it relates to there, on there. I can't vote for you though, and I can't suggest.
Thank you.
All right, so for those who are at home, and reminder of here, residential rate is nineteen thirteen, commercial is thirty-nine sixty-nine, of which counselors can suggest a shift. We take three at a time and then we start with the, the third and work back to the first. Counselor Lisi?
Motion to set a CIP rate at one, uh, one point six one, making a residential tax rate of nineteen dollars and fifteen cents and a commercial tax rate of forty twenty-five.
There was no second to that. Next, Counselor Tolman.
I'd like to make a motion to set the CIP shift at one point five nine five, making the residential nineteen twenty-nine and the business thirty-nine eighty-seven.
So the request is.
Jesus, thank you.
One point five nine five. So residential is nineteen point twenty-nine, commercial thirty-nine eighty-seven, that was seconded by Counselor Bartley. Is there another offer? Counselor Bacon?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to set a tax rate of one point six.
Counselor Bacon has offered one point six, which would be nineteen twenty-five and forty. It was seconded by Counselor Lisi. Is there a third option or, oh, Counselor Sullivan?
Make a motion of one point five eight five.
Motion is for one point five eight five, which would be nineteen thirty-nine and commercial would be thirty-nine sixty-two. And that was seconded by Counselor Anderson Burgos. So with that, we'll start with the third, we always go with the last first, so that is a shift of one point five eight five. Clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for option, or number three.
Bartley?
No.
Resnahan?
No.
Leahy?
No.
Lebron Martinez?
No.
Lisi?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
No.
Bacon?
No.
Valentin?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Nine yeas, three nays.
So that one did not pass. Number two was the one point six. Clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the one point six.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
No.
Leahy?
No.
Lebron Martinez?
No.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Tolman?
No.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Three yeas, nine nays.
Option two, or number two is not passed. Number one, which is one point five nine five, clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
No.
Leahy?
No.
Lebron Martinez?
No.
Lisi?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Six yeas, six nays.
Put your vote, you.
Second.
You can do a motion to reconsider, number one, which is one point five nine five, which that would then yield. Nineteen point twenty-nine residential, thirty-nine eighty-seven commercial.
Five nine five.
Mr. President?
Counselor Lisi, yeah?
Thank you. So I, I think we went through this last year, you know, we're really working within a narrow range because we really don't want to go above that forty-four, our commercial user, uh, commercial taxpayers, and we don't want to, you know, really hit the homeowners with the difference. So Tony, is he still around?
Come in.
It would actually, I, I think in the future.
Just give him the mic.
Come to the mic, you're starting our suspension of the rules. Um, I think in the future, it would really benefit us to have a more limited window and more options within that window. Like, for example, could you tell us, I know you might have to do some math, but could you do a, a shift rate of one point five nine eight, so some, somewhere between the nineteen twenty-nine on residential and the nineteen twenty-five on residential?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can still vote today on any one of those percentages.
But they're looking for the numbers.
It's nice to have the numbers so that we can understand what, what the impact is on.
It's going to be within that four cent range. I mean, I can go run the numbers now and you can do a couple of things.
Yeah, we did have that the last two years where you had the, the limits within.
Okay. But no one, you know, I sent it out, no one.
We did.
No, that's fine, we're just saying. No, there's, let's be clear, there's no pointing fingers, it's just saying, that's what was there last year, it's something that might be a preference.
I mean, I can run that right now. It'll take a couple of minutes.
Counselor Bacon?
So we have the motion before us to reconsider. Um, I think the folks who just voted for the one twenty-five on the sewer rate have, you know, you're going to hit both, the businesses and the residents. I think the best thing we can do is try to find a balance to hit them equitably. This is a bad year, all the way around. And we just had a forty-five minute argument about being business friendly so people could deliver pot, and we just undid all that, like, in the last twenty minutes. But anyway, so I urge my colleagues to reconsider because I think, um, I may stand corrected, but it looks like this strikes a balance between the increase in a fairly even way between the residential and the business. Would that be correct, Tony? Am I reading those numbers right?
Well, I mean, if you're increasing a sewer rate and then you're going to increase the commercial rate, I mean, if you do it equitably, I mean, that's still up to you guys, you know?
But I mean, if we, if we go with the one point five nine five, we're increasing the residential rate from nineteen thirteen to nineteen twenty-nine, so it's sixteen cents.
Yep.
And we're increasing business from thirty-nine sixty-nine to thirty-nine eighty-seven, which is eighteen cents. It's about as close to giving them the same increase.
You are correct.
Numerically, not dollar-wise, but, I mean, it's one way to look at it.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, I'll just say this again, I filed the order, it didn't really go anywhere, but Springfield is working, it's working really, uh, well with it, it's saving money is switching insurance to the GIC. Uh, right now, insurance, uh, that's one of the biggest bills that the city of Hoi Okast to deal with and it's, it's because we're, we insure all of our employees, we want to make sure all of our employees are healthy and their families are healthy. However, uh, looking at a different, bigger pot to go in might save us a lot of money. Thank you.
It's actually in, in finance, Counselor Leahy, we did take it up once, it's been tabled for rediscussion. Anyone else?
Reconsider, right.
All right, so I know there was a request to have the assessor go back and run those numbers, is that still the appetite of the council?
It's four cents, you said.
Can we reconsider?
We have a motion.
Or we could go to.
The motion to reconsider is on the table.
Motion reconsider.
And I just want to say that I, I seconded Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Bacon's CIP shift rate because I, I do think that that is the increase that hits both business and residential taxpayers at the, at the same rate of increase.
So motion is to reconsider the option one, which was one point five nine five, correct?
Aye.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we're going to go back to one. Clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for one point five nine five.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
No.
Leahy?
No.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Nine yeas, four nays.
Put your vote, the tax rate is one five nine five. I said that correctly, yeah, one five nine five.
CIP shift.
CIP shift. Reminder, because of the new technology and requirement.
If you could just tell the people at home what that equals to?
So the new shift would be to residential nineteen point twenty-nine, commercial thirty-nine eighty-seven. We should go to the assessor's office, I'd say, one at a time because we still need to vote on other avenues. We can start with Counselor Valentin. Go in, if you voted yes, he's got to have you clicking into the system, come back, next person goes, and then that way, it's done for tonight. If we don't do this, the, the rate won't be set.
The state, yeah, the state can hold up our, they need your electronic signatures. But, um, also, I'd just like to say that if during the rounding of numbers, some of the tax rate might change a penny or two and I will let everyone know what that is once it's certified. Thank you.
How about, would you like to take a recess for five minutes and get it done?
Yes, everybody do it.
Motion would be to recess for five minutes, come back at nine thirty-five. All those in favor? All those opposed? We're in recess till nine thirty-five. All right, we're going to start back up. All right, so motion is to come out of recess and back to the full city council. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Just for those who are at home viewing in, we had to take a recess because there's a new requirement that once you set the tax rate, you have to install or plug it into the computer, of which then there was technical difficulties on that. So that is now done. Uh, for those who didn't have a chance to do it, give, or so, give permission to, uh, the clerk as well as the assessor to put your name in and then that gets finalized.
Clerk, you have my permission.
You got my permission.
I got mine in. And I trust you, bro.
All right, so the permission is given. Now we'll turn it over to Counselor Bartley.
Motion to suspend, it's go out of order, take up item forty-seven, please.
Motion is suspend the, excuse me, suspend the rules, go out of order to number forty-seven. For all those in favor?
Preview a reading, please.
All those opposed? Resolution to file and accept grants with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy Environmental Affairs. This is with regards to the Pulea Pool and we do have the engineer here to discuss.
Motion to suspend the rules, allow the engineer to approach quickly.
Motion to suspend rules, allow the engineer to come forward and answer questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Of which, this is accepting the language in order to go for grants, correct?
See, you can hear me, good. Yes, um, the reason for this, and I apologize for the, um, for the late notice, we were advised a couple of months ago that before the end of the calendar year, that the council would have to vote, uh, reference to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-five, Section three, which is the designation of Parkland reference into the appropriation and the acceptance of the grant funding for the Pulea Pool. When we were told this several months ago, we were also told at the same time that the, the park grant people expected to have the funding award announced in November or early December. And what we would have done would, would have come to you with the grant in hand saying in order to move forward with the grant, we request that this language be voted upon. Unfortunately, we have not yet heard any news from the state park grant people, although the deadline to incorporate the language in the resolution of the end of the calendar year is still there. So what this resolution is asking the council to do is basically grant the mayor the authorization to apply for the grant, which he has already done, and to accept the grant if and when it's awarded to the city. And then it uses the correct reference, a half dozen lines down in the resolution referring to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-five, Section three, which is the designation of the property for Parkland purposes.
Was, just a question, was this the same grant for four hundred thousand that we accepted last time but then had to turn back?
Uh, it is the same grant, correct?
Is this time around, will there be a city match requirement to it?
There is not a city match requirement to it. The, the council, as you know, has already appropriated funding for this project, so the project is moving forward, um, and the project cost will be reduced by four hundred thousand dollars if we're successful.
Correct, okay.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second.
No, all right, motion is to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, this one was just for the language, Joe, we need a roll call for it, because it is.
We, we do need a roll call, this is unique where we're actually approving the grant before it's, it's been awarded.
Right.
And a part of it is because of the park stuff, which I, Counselor Lisi did a better job explaining this in the finance committee meeting, but we did give leave to withdraw the last language because the grant was, because of the, missing the deadline, um, not the city's, completely the city's fault with the deadline and the, the project wasn't far enough along to meet the deadline. So now the project is far enough along to meet the deadline, we need to put the language back in place and to approve it upfront.
All right, so motion would be to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the second reading?
I should pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the language.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Put your vote, you're approved, item forty-seven.
Very nice.
Thank you very much. pointing to the council on aging, just serves remaining term that will expire August two thousand nineteen.
Reappointment?
Appointing, no. It's an appointment.
Send to public service, please.
Public service for item three, all those in favor, all opposed. Number four
Number four.
Is also an appointment.
Receive and send to public service.
To public service, number four, which was Ms. Woods, by Fairfield Ave, for Historic Commission.
It serves an alternate, I mean. Just to take four, five, and six as a package and.
I second David's, yep.
Four, five, and six, and what, Counselor?
Approve them all.
Second.
Approve them all, so four, five, and six. Four, we said, was Susan Woods to Historical Commission, Price Armstrong to Conservation Commission, and Olivia Mazul for the Fairfield Ave Historic District. So, those are all to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, they've all been confirmed. Seven is from the city clerk.
Receive and approve.
Motion is to receive and approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Number eight is the monthly budget report.
Motion to receive and accept finance.
Motion is to receive and for the finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Number nine is a communication from.
Nine and ten as a package, since we've already addressed them and received.
Nine and ten is to receive, send a copy to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Eleven, we did do, twelve, a letter from Mark Nadorf withdrawing his, his name as a commissioner for the Board of Water Commissioners.
Receive.
Motion is to receive and accept.
Yeah, can we, can we take up thirty-seven as well, for Counselor Leahy's order, I think we can all add our names on that.
Thirty-seven, motion to suspend the rules, go out of order, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. From Counselor Leahy, the Iowa City Council present Mr. Nadorf with the proclamation for his thirty years of service to the city and the water department. Add everyone's name.
Yes, please.
We ask Counselor Leahy.
With his permission.
To deliver it to Florida.
And.
I'd love to.
He'll schedule the, all of us to go to Florida to hand-deliver it. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, thirty-seven's passed.
Motion to take items thirteen to sixteen.
As a package.
As a package.
Thirteen to sixteen, take up as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. These are the minutes of various board meetings, motion would be received.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
No.
Is there an issue with one of them, or no?
We're just getting all of these reports too late.
Well, that usually is the issue. Alright, petitions, petition from number seventeen for one forty Middle Water Street, so that'd be ordinance.
Ordinance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Mr. President, if I could, before you go to the president's report.
Sure.
Ask you to skip over it, no.
Sure.
Item number two, we kind of jumped over earlier, when we were bouncing around.
Item two, yes, it stayed on the table.
Yeah, you are.
I don't remember why we laid it on the table, I know the city solicitor wasn't here at the moment, and I don't know if you're prepared to discuss it. It's been on the table for a couple of meetings now, came out of committee on finance with a recommendation to adopt.
Adopt it, yeah.
And then it was laid on the table, I think, to answer some questions, I'm not even sure what the questions were.
Motion to suspend the rules, allow the legal department to answer questions with regards to item number two. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. So, number two is from Pay Solicitor, twenty-two thousand five hundred, to Pay Assistant Solicitor, twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Suspend the rules, allow the solicitor to approach.
That was already done, but.
What this involves is the way Paul Pear was paid, and, and there was a period of time, which I don't remember what it was during the year, where Mr. Pear was paid out of the assistant city solicitor, instead of out of the solicitor's account. And I think we're just, I think we're just adjusting money to balance off the assistant solicitor's, assistant city solicitor's account to get through the rest of the year, but if we could defer that to Crystal, if she can answer that real quick.
Counselor McGivern's correct, so what happened is when he took the step up to solicitor, they just kept paying out of the assistant city solicitor budget line, instead of the solicitor budget line. So, this just moves our budget accordingly, because, you know, we are hiring someone new, we want to make sure that all of our money is where it needs to be, so that we can pay everybody appropriately. So, this is just making the paperwork match.
So, motion would be to pass the first reading?
Oh, pass the first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion would be to pass the second reading.
Pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Next is the president's report, I will be quick, now that all the serious stuff and contentious stuff is over, I'd like to change up a bit here. Go back to my traditional ways.
Oh.
So, with that. Make you guys laugh, I gotta bring back some humor here. So, president's report, I'll make it quick. One, the boss in front of me said that some people have not responded to the invite for our holiday party, which is January fifth. So, please respond, in order for us to get the head count in, it'll be at White Koff this year, once again, January fifth, two thousand eighteen. And, I believe, the other one was, unfortunately, on a sad note, a friend of ours from the library, president of the Board of Libraries, Terry Plum passed away after a battle. A great, great gentleman, and he fought us tooth and nail and the community to raise funds for that library and its renovation. Just a wonderful, wonderful human being, and I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for him, and all the service he gave to the city.
Thank you.
Bless you, by the way. Thank you. With that, I don't want to end on a sad note, you guys, everyone, guys, girls, I always say guys by accident. Wonderful job this year, a lot of committee meetings, a lot of work was done, and tonight, sewer rate, tax rate, balancing the budget, just a lot on the agenda, so I thank you very much for a very good year, in that sense of all the work that you've done, and I appreciate everything you've done in the committees, as well as within the community. If you look to the side here, we have almost three bags full of coats, sweaters. So, if you have anything for kids or anything else, anyone at home, we're still collecting them up to December thirty-first. Want to see if we can get at least, like, four to five bags full of clothes over to the Salvation Army to help them out this, this winter.
Todd?
Yep.
I would suggest maybe donating that jacket you have on.
No, this is, this is a keeper, it's a keeper, Jim. With that, once again, thank you for everything, happy holidays to everyone, Merry Christmas. I will now go back to committees.
President, can I, can I just quickly make an announcement of the continuum of some meetings that have been taking place in Ward One B, and it's gonna have, we have a meeting coming up, I'm sorry, on Thursday at six o'clock, the Holy Public Library. It's the meetings that I think I shared in the past, where issues on quality of life that are affecting the corridor in the area of the public library, and there's been a lot of, I will say, efforts that we've seen the improvement. So, anyone is welcome to attend, but just letting the public know that this meeting is taking place, again, this Thursday at six o'clock, thank you.
Anyone else? With that, we will move on to finance, nineteen A, committee on finance, referred, transfer from Pay Solicitor, sixteen hundred, Pay Principal Clerk, twenty-one thousand eight sixty-three eighty cents, to Pay Paralegal.
Thank you, motion to receive and pass the first reading.
Motion to receive and pass the first reading and our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, the finance committee did meet on this. Our recommendation was a five to zero vote to pay for the transfer, which would actually help in the correct paying of an employee now, who has been, recently passed, I gotta say this correctly, recently hasn't passed a bar, but has become.
Graduated.
Got a law degree, graduated, thank you, Mr. President. All these lawyers in the building, I think they would help me out quicker. She's been doing work that is equal to a paralegal, she has been the principal clerk up to date. She probably will continue to do the work, but I think by paying the additional money of a paralegal, which, as you can see, is not a whole big difference, it does make, it makes sense to, to help to keep her, I believe, I'll call her by her first name, Sarah, you know, that will keep her going in the, in the department itself. Again, the committee recommends five, nothing to pass the transfer. The principal clerk would not be filled at this time, that would be subject to a budget in the future.
Correct. Motion would be to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, if you vote yes, you vote for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Nineteen B, committee on finance, referred, the amount of three thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty cents, authorized from the Board of Health to pay unencumbered bills from our prior year. Oh.
I'm sorry.
Alright, so nineteen B is three thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars, twenty-one cents for a prior bill for Department of Health. Counselor McGivern.
Make a motion to receive and pass the first reading.
Motion is to receive and pass the first reading and our discussion.
We're doing two things here, one, it's a prior year bill, which involved a advertisement for a public hearing that needed mandatory for the Board of Health Commission, and two, we're just authorizing that the monies this year, monies from this year's budget will be used to pay for that bill last year. Brian came in, apologized to us, because this bill was missed at the end of last year, and we ended up having to apologize to him, because he stood around for like a three-hour finance committee meeting, and before we recognized him in the audience, but he was, he was a good, good department head, and gave us, answered all our questions. Recommendation is to allow both, and it was a five or nothing vote by the committee.
Motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Mr. President, if we could do suspended rules, we'll do nineteen C, nineteen E, nineteen F, nineteen G, and nineteen H, along with nineteen I together. These are all grants.
Motion is to suspend the rule, take up nineteen C, E, F, G, H, and I as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Preveyed reading, nineteen C is the two thousand nineteen traffic enforcement grant. E is the donation of firearms and vests. Call that a grant as well, it's a donation. F is the policing grant. G is the emergency management grant. H is the law enforcement equipment technology grant. And I is the health summer youth jobs grant.
Make a motion to pass as a package, to pass their first readings, and as a package to, to address all of them, although I'll give a quick synopsis individually if, to answer any questions.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading and our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, the, the first one is in our, is, is the traffic enforcement, we just passed one of these two weeks ago, and this is an additional traffic enforcement grant. This is going to authorize and give the police department some money to use between now and.
September.
September, thank you, Counselor Bartley, who is our sixth member of the finance committee. And it's, it's, it's a good, good grant that will allow the enforcement of a number of different things, particularly at some intersections, but a number of different things of traffic enforcement throughout the year. It'll be used for overtime, to put extra patrols out there. If there's no questions, I'll go along to the next one, which is nineteen E, and this is the ballistic firearms and vests. This is a grant that would allow the, the police department to purchase a big amount of it this year. It's an ongoing grant, but a big amount of it this year is going to be for thirty tasers. They cost about twelve hundred dollars apiece. Although, this money is not going to be used for training, the police department does do training, and I know all the officers that were, will not have a taser without going through the, the appropriate training. The finance committee, again, votes five, nothing to, to accept this, no match. If there's no questions, I'll move along to the next one. This is item nineteen F, and this is the establishment for the Strategic Police Initiative Grant. Again, the police department would use this for an ongoing grant, but this would be a three-year grant itself. The, the amount this year is two hundred thousand dollars total. This year would be an expenditure that would allow for the police to, to receive and to get their licenses for the, the liaison to work with BHNs and mental health service providers within the community. This one in particular, the last time we used this, or the last time we talked about this, was about the opioid crisis. This is more geared towards senior citizens and abuse. I think it's a fantastic way to use it, and I think it's a good, good money, I think it's good money coming to the city of Ohio, and a fantastic way to use it. If there's no question, nineteen G's, the emergency management preparation grant, again, with the police department, and it's something that would be used, thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. This would be, I apologize, this is the, this is a fire department one, I apologize. But Deputy Chief Jeff Proskopowski was in, and this would be used in, in terms of MEMA and the emergency preparation. This particular one would be to buy equipment, which would include six PCs, six computer type, needed for the, if anybody's ever been in the emergency response room within the fire department. And, always having trouble reading my own writing, but there's another piece of equipment that Jeff said that they were going to purchase, I don't know if Counselor Bartley remembered that.
Yeah, there's, there's, I think a seventy-two inch.
Thank you.
Monitor?
Monitor, yeah.
Smart board or something, yeah.
Yeah, monitor.
Monitor.
So, it's, sounds impressive.
Thank you, David. If there's no questions, the next one is the governor's local law enforcement equipment and technology, which is nineteen H. Again, this one is back to the police, the police department, and what we'd be doing here is. Dave?
Dave?
Dave? No, this is Joe, because Joe is mixing up his numbers.
Joe, yeah, I think.
This is the tasers, and, and I know I did that wrong. The, this is the thirty tasers, it's twelve hundred dollars apiece, and the money will go strictly towards the tasers. And the one I told you was the tasers, was actually.
Firearms and vests?
Firearms and vests, which would be the.
Auxiliary.
Firearms and vests, Joe, if you remember, that was, that was a donation, and that's going to be used to support the auxiliary police, because they're not really getting paid, so they'll be able to use that for this, this year. And then when they, then for the next class comes in, those arms will be used for the subsequent classes.
They'll be given back to the use in the next class.
Yeah, so it'll be kind of recycled over and again, so.
Twelve thousand six hundred and two dollars, and I told you, he is the seventh member of a finance, and we appreciate that.
Sixth.
Six.
What?
He's seventh now?
He's a sixth member.
He's dropping down?
He's six and seven, you know, I mean, come on. Barry, you know, let's go try and get through this and get out of here. Any questions on that one? And we have item number nineteen, nineteen G.
I.
I.
Nineteen I, which is the Strategic Police Initiative.
Nineteen I is the health summer youth jobs.
Summer youth jobs is from the Parks and Rec Department.
Healthy summer jobs, yep.
And we have the opportunity to accept this grant that would pay for some summer youth jobs. The total amount of the grant would be found in the notes that Terry Shepherd did send to us email.
Thirty-one hundred.
Thirty, okay, thank you, Mr. President. We deem this as a, a good use of the money, anytime we can get some money into our youth during the summers, especially during their off, from the, their school year, I think it's a good idea to, to accept the grant and use it the way it was, with the confidence that the Parks, the Recreation Department of the city will use that money wisely. We recommend all these be received, there are no matches, and that they be put to good use as the language states.
Thank you very much. We took them up as a package, but we can vote on them separately.
I'm standing from the first one.
Counselor Leahy asked to abstain from nineteen C, which is the traffic enforcement grant. So, let's take that one up separately from the others. So, on nineteen C, the motion would be to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Bartley?
Yes, sorry.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Did I forget McGivern?
No, you got me, yes.
I did, okay. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unit, I know. Unanimous vote of the body.
With your vote, you approved it. Counselor Leahy, nineteen F, would also, you should stay away from that one. Nineteen E then take up on its own, which is the donation of the firearms and vests for auxiliary. Motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading, clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the donation, which is roughly around twelve thousand six hundred and two dollars.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Oh, you're seeing each other, too?
Yep.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer, 19F. Councilor Leahy, I was saying from this one. This is the Police Initiative Grant, which was $699,400. Motion is pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Hold on, Councilor Bartley.
Just under discussion, I just want to point it out, because this is the second grant we had where there's going to be policemen taking off regular payroll and putting in, through a grant-funded program for three years, yet we don't ever remember these things when it comes to budget time.
Why raise that?
Well, yeah, well, we raised it again, and we, this is stuff that we, you know, budget time, we just, it's all forgotten, and so let's just plow through and pass it, pass it all at once. I mean, we just have to be a little more cautious. The second thing I want to point out, I really appreciate the comments from the public speaker, I can't remember her name, I wrote it down, but, yeah, what's her last name, Josie?
Schmidt.
Ms. Schmidt, yeah. I really appreciate her comments, so I think those are important and recognized, and so one of the things we talked about, Councilor Leahy was going to file an order tonight, but didn't file it, but we'll, 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 we'll do it for next time, relative to ensuring that we have reports when these grants are concluded. So we talked about, we put a condition on at least one of them, Joe, for, that we didn't mention when I was in the meeting. I know, I know you conditioned one of them.
There was.
I know you did.
Yeah.
So I don't, but I don't know if we...
Those are for the auditor position.
No.
And this one, this was for a grant.
It's initiative, it's a police, the traffic, I think.
It was a traffic enforcement one.
Yeah.
So that was in, that was in the, that was passed in committee, so I assume that was, that's passed tonight as well, because that was what, that was what came out of committee that we included, that, yeah, they have to provide a report to us. So I, I'm hopeful that those are, I mean, so what she said, I think, is a good point, and then, and then what, what we have to ensure is that, you know, to her point, that the, the proper training mechanisms, mechanisms are in place, and I think we can see that when we get year-end reports at these grants. Thank you.
So 19F was, motion was pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for that grant.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Lisi? No, Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve those grants. 19D, the Commandant of Finance, it was referred in order that the sum of $13,39,000 be appropriated to pay the system capital planning projects for the water department. Recommend that be adopted.
Motion received, pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass, first reading, or discussion, Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a bond request from the Water Works. They, even though this bond is paid for through revenue generated through their user rate itself, it does require a city council vote, and it does become part of the entire city's bonding scenario itself. However, it is treated different in the respect that the revenue source is not the, not the city budget property tax, but more, more entirely the rate, the ratepayers. The Finance Committee has met on, this would have been the third occasion with the Water Works on this, on this project. It's noted as, or called, the Comprehensive Capital Improvement Projects, which is to take place over the next three years. It's an aggressive, but in some cases, much-needed capital improvement projects for the water departments. The priorities include the redoing of the, the water tanks. Many of us who have taken the tours have seen these tanks, the, the inner tanks up towards the Ashley, McLean reservoirs, towards the, the water department property up there. You can tell just by looking that they are in dire need of, of not just repainting, but also repairs need to be made to them. This is the first. Second would be the Whiting Street, we had a lot of discussion about this, reservoir spill, spillway and discharge, discharge reconstruction. Whiting Street is up on Mount Tam, near the, the Mountain Park property. Many of us know that this is not online water, but it has not been decommissioned. The city is still responsible for it. They've drawn down the water level on numerous occasions because of the, the danger to the spillway in the dam dike itself. This is considered an extreme hazard, because if there ever was a breach of this spillway, a breach of the dam itself, it would immediately affect both 91 and possibly residential neighborhoods in the Upper Ward Seven area. We have a lot of discussion, because Councilor Sullivan has some visions about using this property for passive recreation and other things, which he reminded the commissioners who were present, which were with the, I'm sorry, with Mr. Canty, and the, three commissioners were actually, two commissioners were actually present. Mr. Nadoff, Mr. Barrett, we're, I'm sorry, all three were there.
All three were there.
Mark, Mark, you know, owned up to being lame duck, but he certainly is knowledgeable for his 28 years of service or so. The, the next priority is the gatehouse. The gatehouse improvement is something, for those of us who've taken the tour, is something that is necessary in terms of the water that comes out of a reservoir. This particular gatehouse is not been worked on in some time, and this is at the McLean Reservoir. McLean and Ashley are online waters that are rarely used for our distribution, however, from time to time, we do use them, but it's online water system, because not only is it spring-fed, we also are able to dump water in there from the, the pipeline and from Tocomedy, from Southampton, but that spring-fed reservoir also naturally goes into the Bear Hall Reservoir in West Springfield, which is not us to control, but certainly our responsibility to make sure the water keeps going through. But the gatehouse is for emergency use for our particular distribution, and it is a, a priority, the third or fourth priority on the list. After that, there's a, I think everybody can refer to the, the series of, of the distribution improvements, that's pipelines within the city itself. The higher priority, which they, they anticipate they can complete during the three-year project is in yellow. If there is additional funds at the end of, towards the end of the projects, the blue priorities come next, and then down the line, the green, our green priorities are of a, of a lesser priority, but certainly work that will need to be done beyond the three years, but hopefully if the money is available, they'll complete all of it. Some of this is in-house, which I think is important, because they have a history of doing tremendous work with their in-house crews, but it's an aggressive schedule to, to get us back on, on track. I think many of us were there in the, the initial meeting with them, where Councilor Sullivan put a, a water pipe, a section of a water pipe that shows us what can happen to a water pipe that's not replaced in a timely fashion, or some of the old materials that were used. It's a 13.9390 bond request approval to be paid for by the rate. I did talk with the, the auditor, I did talk with the, with the treasurer in terms of what that means. Again, it does, you know, it is looked upon as, as part of our, our full structure, but whether it's Moody's or our bond rating, the, the source of revenue is taken into consideration, so in some respects, it is separated. But again, they need our reapproval. The Finance Committee is recommending that these worthy projects that we do bond for them, and that these projects would, would take place over the next three years.
Councilor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to note that when the water commissioners and the head of the department came in, they reviewed for the Finance Committee a plan, which has been recommended by our financial advisor, Cinder, that we have for the entire city. They stepped in this bond after other bond payments were completed. They planned for this over time, so that it didn't throw the whole rate structure out of whack. They're doing it in a stepped-in fashion, and they have a prioritized plan in place. If all the departments in the city were run the way the water department is run, we'd have a financial system that was stable, and that's the order I have in Finance Committee, that we finally do this for the city, before we end up like Springfield, because we're going down that path. Thank you.
Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the $13 million bond.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the bond. Do you want to take up J, K, and L as a package?
So moved.
Motion is take up, spend rules take up J, K, and L as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They all deal with the same issue, which would be, J is to take $5,500 from head clerk audit, K is $438 from head clerk audit, and L is to take $6,172 from head clerk audit, and then allocate them to the, all the different directors, department heads, or positions that are receiving a raise in the union contract.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion that we receive and pass their first readings.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass, first reading, or discussion.
On, on the source of, of money, I did talk to the, to our new auditor. I talked to Tanya, who has, has said this before publicly, but I wanted to make sure that we were still in the same light with these amounts. The money is coming from, two of them is the head clerk audit, a position that is not currently filled, and going into various line items to honor, as Mr., as the President said, to honor an MOU contract with the, with the, the association itself, or the professionals and supervisors. Tanya tells me, and she did tell all of us, I think, but just remind everyone, that she is looking at this position as towards the way she wants to develop the office while she is our auditor. I think that is prudent management way of looking at things, instead of just filling it for sake of filling it. She wants, she wants to make sure she has the correct person for the correct needs of the office, in the way she sees her responsibilities, and the responsibility of the auditor's office to be carried out. She, she maintains there is enough of a balance within that account. Councilor McGee asked a question that we also had passed an order that we ask one of our former auditors to come in for some consulting, Brian Smith, if he so sees fit, and she, I believe she feels she can still do it all with what, what remains in the budget. With that in mind, what, what we're actually doing is, it's a, it's a, Damian Cody came in, the president of the association is still Jeff Burkott. Damian has been a longtime member of that association. I believe he's, I'm not sure if he has a title, but he stepped in for Jeff, who could not be there. He's done so in the past, and both of them have always answered our questions. It's a four-page MOU. The basis of the financial is found on the third page of the MOU, which is effective July 1, 2018, a 1% raise, July 1, 2019, a 1.5% raise, and July 1, 2020, a 2% raise. Many of these individuals are some people who have not received regular COLA increases, and, and many of them sometimes have gone lengthy periods of time without receiving any increase. There is some other language that has direct or indirect, our responsibility is the financial impact, but there is an additional, added personal day to the calendar year, going from three to four. There is also an additional, added to the vacation schedule over, I think it's after 25 years, an additional week that is being added. The Finance Committee met with and got the answers to all of the questions that were asked during the meeting, and we recommended, I believe, five to nothing, that we adopt these transfers, providing that the auditor was comfortable with the source of money.
So, motion is to pass the first reading for all three as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for all three transfers.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfers. 19M, the Commandant of Finance referred in order that the mayor and/or DPW superintendent send a communication regarding the temporary speed humps.
Make a motion that the committee report be adopted?
Motion that the committee report be adopted, that's been complied with, our discussion, Councilor McGivern.
Real quick, and we certainly can answer any questions, Mike McManus did come before us. We did talk a lot about, because I think we all know, we got an arms-length list of temporary speed humps out there, and with the potential going to permanent speed humps. Mike shedded some of the financial information with us. The, the cost of the temporary speed hump is about $6,000 apiece. They, they don't come easy, but in, with the advanced ordering, we can, I believe if he orders a number of them, can save a little bit, but he does have to advance order of them. The cost, if we go to, if decide to go to a permanent hump, is actually between eight and $12,000, even though it's done in-house to construct those permanent humps on the streets where they are. He said there is no money identified to purchase these temporary ones. He did said there's a possibility at the end of the year, that he may have some money in the budget that he can free up to make a purchase. In accordance with the ordinance request, we had the discussion, and we asked that the committee report, the order was complied, would be adopted.
Councilor Tallman?
Yeah, just briefly, this is Counselor Bartley's order, and he asked me, he had leave before this came up, it was at the Finance Meeting, and I talked to the DPW superintendent. He did state that there is two of them, and they're still down at the DPW, and they won't be putting them in, you know, in the wintertime, of course, looking at maybe March or April to start doing them. As, as our chairman stated, that they're, see if he could possibly free up some money to maybe get four more or six more, speed, temporary speed humps. And I think, Joe, they said something about a cost with the, the counters with that?
Oh, I, there is, we only have one traffic counter.
One traffic counter, right.
So I think the suggestion is, if we went to that many temporaries...
We'd have to get...
Anytime we, anytime we vote and adopt a temporary speed hump, it comes...
25 years, an additional week that is being added. The Finance Committee met with and got the answers to all of the questions that were asked during the meeting, and we recommended, I believe, five to nothing, that we adopt these transfers, providing that the auditor was comfortable with the source of money.
So, motion is to pass the first reading for all three as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for all three transfers.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfers. 19N, the community of finance referred an order that the mayor and/or DPW superintendent send a communication regarding the temporary speed humps.
Make a motion that the committee report be adopted.
Motion that the committee report be adopted, that's been complied with, our discussion. Counselor McGivern?
Real quick, and we certainly can answer any questions. Mike McManus did come before us. We did talk a lot about, because I think we all know, we got an arms-length list of temporary speed humps out there, and with the potential going to permanent speed humps. Mike shedded some of the financial information with us. The, the cost of the temporary speed hump is about $6,000 apiece. They, they don't come easy, but in, with the advanced ordering, we can, I believe, if he orders a number of them, can save a little bit, but he does have to advance order of them. The cost, if we go to, if we decide to go to a permanent hump, is actually between $8,000 and $12,000, even though it's done in-house to construct those permanent humps on the streets where they are. He said there is no money identified to purchase these temporary ones. He did said there's a possibility at the end of the year that he may have some money in the budget that he can free up to make a purchase. In accordance with the ordinance request, we had the discussion, and we asked that the committee report, the order was complied, would be adopted.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, just briefly, this is Counselor Bartley's order, and he asked me, he had to leave before this came up, it was at the Finance Meeting, and I talked to the DPW superintendent. He did state that there is two of them, and they're still down at the DPW, and they won't be putting them in, you know, in the wintertime, of course, looking at maybe March or April to start doing them. As, as our chairman stated, that they're, see if he could possibly free up some money to maybe get four more or six more, speed, temporary speed humps. And I think, Joe, they said something about a cost with the, the counters with that?
Oh, I, there is, we only have one traffic counter.
One traffic counter, right.
So I think the suggestion is, if we went to that many temporaries.
We'd have to get.
Anytime we, anytime we vote and adopt a temporary speed hump, it comes with an automatic traffic count study to see what, you know, not just what the residents are thinking, which is important, but also to see what it did to traffic before and after.
And he did state that, you know, they are needed in several areas right now, that they're waiting for them, the speed humps, and there is a cost too involved with the permanent ones, as Counselor McGivern stated, but Dave, I did the best I could get the answers. So hopefully, we can keep tabs on that, and hopefully, if some money comes forward next year, that we'd be able to purchase at least maybe a couple more sets of them.
Counselor Tomlin can remind me, I think we made the motion, it was complied with, but also to refer to the mayor to see if he could help us out.
Right.
So, motion is, that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 19N, community of finance referred an amount of $11,921 authorized from the mayor's office for city liability and damage for insurance rendered for fiscal year 2018, or unencumbered in 2018, recommended that it be denied.
Make a motion to, to receive the committee report and adopt it. Real quick, Mr. President, you taught me, we can't just give leave to withdraw on these items, and we did receive an email, and this language and a dollar amount, I believe, is changing to, and a replacement, I believe, is down the road, will be forthcoming.
Right, so.
Is that the request of the city?
Right, they're looking to give it leave to withdraw, but you have to deny them. So, motion is to pass the first reading, which is to receive and deny the request. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading to deny. I know that's kind of confusing. If you vote yes, you're voting to deny it. If you vote no, you're voting to pass it, but they already said they don't want it passed.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
With your vote, you approve to deny. There was no public safety, no public service, no DGNR, no charter and rules, and no, no joint committee. Onto motions, resolutions, 25 from Counselor Sullivan regarding 255 Chestnut Street, the property is owned downtown residential, and has been assessed at $29,900. DGNR?
DGNR.
To DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 26 from Counselor Sullivan, an MOU from the Housing Authority dated December 2018 with regards to 255 Chestnut Street. DGNR? Also to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 27 from Counselor Valentine, that a handicap sign be placed at 136 Beach Street.
Ordinance with a copy to the commission on disabilities, please.
Receive, refer to ordinance with a copy to the commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 28 from Counselor Anderson Burgos, request that temporary speed humps, and a study be done at Woods Ave. and Hillside.
Refer to DPW.
So, receive, adopt, and refer to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It might have been stuck in there. And it was. 30 from Counselor Bartley, with the upcoming US census, that the city council hereby ordered that planning commence immediately to get the word out to voters on the importance of the census. HG&E send out reminders. So, motion, receive, adopt, send to HG&E.
Yeah, so, receive, adopt, refer to the clerk, the mayor, and then HG&E and Waterworks.
So, refer to the clerk, mayor, Waterworks, and HG&E.
Whoever does our website, I'm not, who, who does that now?
And we'll say the web designer.
Who is it though? Oh, it is still Eileen, okay, great.
With, with a copy to the Eileen Poehler.
Yeah, then hopefully, we get a little feedback about what's happening, Brenna, when you, when you get a, you know, developed, divulged a little bit.
All right, all those in favor?
Quick note, Mr. President, as we go along, this also means we're going to have to redraw the ward lines, once the census is complete, and that's a little bit of a process. So I think we should take the steps that the mayor, city clerk, and others, you know, get involved, so we can all have some input on the new ward lines.
Do you want to send this to committee, just so we have it as a reminder?
I, I think it would take a different order. I think we have time to do it.
So, that is just to receive, adopt, send it to the appropriate people, we said. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 31 is from Counselor Bartley, keep track of home and commercial conveyances, order that the tax collector provide to every person seeking a municipal lien certificate with a form of a new property owner to fill out in return.
Yeah, this is a motion, a motion to receive and adopt, and refer to the tax collector.
Receive, adopt, and refer to the tax collector. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 32 from Counselor Bartley, in keeping with tradition, starting three years ago, that the city council invite in the parade committee members.
Oh, yes, receive and adopt, and I'll, I'll work with Ryan to send out the appropriate invitations.
Motion is to receive, adopt.
Meeting in March.
And we'll have the invites sent out, and Counselor Bartley working that for Mark.
I'll note that the parade committee loves this, you know, they were, they were getting tired of us reading proclamations at all their functions, so I think they actually enjoy coming down. Last year, they brought the bagpiper and someone else, David, I remember, it was.
No, we had, we had a really good turnout, so that worked out well.
All right. 33 from Counselor Bartley, at DPW repair the divots on Granville Street and the potholes on Chapin Street, and for the fifth time, install a berm at 41 Granville Street.
This is a record, so if we could receive, adopt, and refer to the Department of Public Works, please.
Motion is to receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 34 from Counselor Bartley and Anderson Burgos, that DPW make the sidewalk handicap accessible at the following locations near Ten Hospital Drive, and paint the crosswalk too. So, motion, we receive, adopt, and send to DPW?
That's, yeah, and, right, and we're going to send a copy to Mr. Cameron at Holyoke Medical Center as well. I'll work with Ryan on that.
All right, and a copy to Holyoke Medical Center, the CFO. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 35 from Counselor Bartley, Counselor Anderson Burgos, that the City of Hoyau consider renaming the street that abuts the northern portion of Ten Hospital Drive. Send that to.
Yeah, I'm simply going to send this to, to ordinance, and, and a copy to the Holyoke Medical Center, and, you know, maybe there's other interested persons as well, but it's, the street doesn't run linear, it kind of jogs a little bit, and so I thought it might be a little chance to do something creative here for, for somebody who's done something important for healthcare in Holyoke, so.
Motion is to.
Send it to ordinance, send it to Medical Center.
Receive, refer to ordinance, and a copy to, once again, Mr. Cameron.
Yeah, Mr. Cameron.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 36 from Counselor Bartley, that the City of Hoyau consider renaming a portion of Chapin Street that is south of South Street.
Yeah, I refer, refer to ordinance, this is very similar to what we did on Coit, yes, thank you, Coit.
To even refer to ordinance.
Ordinance for discussion, yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 37 was done, 38 was done, 39, order that the January 1st meeting be moved to January 8th, which was the consensus of the board.
Well, I guess I'm in the minority, but I, I, I don't, I don't agree with this.
I second that.
Counselor McGivern?
I don't agree, I, I wish we could, we should just keep the meeting schedules the way they are.
It's on, it falls on a holiday, January 1st.
Okay, then, then we don't meet, right, so then we meet.
You have to, the whole premise in the discussion was to fill the vacant seat of the Ward 2. We went out, we went to personnel, and we told them to advertise for that. So now, it has been done, that they have advertised to fill the seat on January 8th. That was the discussion here, that was the consensus of the board, I went forward and did that. So now, I know ordinance has also gone out to schedule a meeting for the same thing, which is fine.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. President, but a point of order.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had let you know at the last city council meeting that I already had scheduled public hearing.
Which we also said, this was on at 7:00.
Right, but I'm just saying.
Understandable.
I did make it known.
The, the request by the majority was, you have to fill the seat, because then you have to fill the committees, which we're now short of. We just saw tonight, one member not showing up to vote on things held things up in committee. You have to fill the seat, and it's proper for the residents of that ward to have representation. That's why we're trying to have it on the 8th, so in any committee meeting after that, they can have the committees. Counselor Labor Martinez?
I have a question regarding the posting. You said it was just advertised. Was that advertised like in any other Spanish newspapers and all? Haven't not seen it? Anybody?
Everything was sent to Hector.
Hector?
And I know they sent to Leagle and to Ryan, certain language, which.
Just because I haven't seen it, I'm trying to figure out where is it at.
She could copy that, right?
I'm sorry?
I'll have them, I'll have them forward a copy.
Can we, please, thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
I was just going to make a suggestion, because there are five Tuesdays in the month of January, and if you go, I understand going, going to the 8th, but then we also meet on the 15th.
Yep.
But would anyone, could we consider taking the 15th? If we go to the 8th, take the 15th and move that to the 22nd.
You could do that.
It's very hard to schedule committee meetings when we don't have with the holidays, and when we don't have a week off in between.
You can move the 15th to what number, Joe?
The 22nd.
22nd, that, that's fine.
But I, I'm not sure, I didn't talk to Linda about that, so I, I don't know, she's already got things set up.
Ordinance is consistently known to meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. But I'm tempted to make it once a month anyway, so.
You could do a special meeting as well, just to appoint the seat.
I might just meet less often.
Counselor.
That's what I was going to suggest, if, and if we do meet on the 8th, which apparently sounds like we have to, why, why can't we just have a one-item agenda?
We're going to.
Okay, oh, no, for the full, for the full board, is my.
No, it was designed for at least filling the seat. That was the consensus of the group.
So, so it's going to be a one-item agenda for the, for the, for the full board?
You can call it a special meeting, you can call it a meeting, however you want to do it, we can do it as a special meeting.
I would suggest a special meeting, because otherwise, whatever the clerk gets, she has to put on the agenda.
All right, so amended to say special meeting for January 8th to fill the Ward 2 seat.
What if we raise something very special?
We can, we can do that, too.
Well, I was, I was going to raise a point of order, so if I did a regular agenda for ordinance, and we were having a special meeting at 7:00, could I simply recess from ordinance? We could then have the special meeting and to get that done?
Absolutely. Yep. So, start yours at 6:00 or 6:30. I think you said 6:00, right?
6:30.
Or 6:00?
Well, because I didn't know if it was going to be a full agenda, I asked Ryan to do the public hearing we had promised for 6:00. I don't know, is that happening?
Yes.
So, start at 6:00, 7:00, recess if need be, we'll do the filling of the seat, and then go back. Does that work for everyone? Counselor McGivern?
I withdraw my suggestion.
All right, so, order that the January 1st meeting be moved to January 8th as a special meeting to fill the Ward 2 seat. Is that how it should read?
Yes.
All those in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
All opposed? On the amendment to fill, Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, it's a quick question, so that, does that mean we're just, on the 8th, we're just voting for the Ward 2 counselor?
Correct.
And then we're going to have all this stuff done tonight, not until the 15th?
15th.
Okay.
Because that's a regular schedule.
Okay, regular schedule, okay.
We have other appointments that we have to do.
All right, we can do that. I'm good with that.
Well, January, you would have the Water Commissioner, any, any other seat that's open.
I got a letter on the assessor.
The assessor as well?
I mean, should we have the special meeting be for all the appointments? The appointment of the counselor and the appointment?
No.
Not the other appointments?
No, save that for the 15th, they can wait.
15th, okay.
Because you have the Water Commissioner.
Because they'll, they'll be landing here, it's going to be a new person, and, and they're not going to know all the candidates.
Right.
So, the 8th is for the Ward 2.
Okay.
The other positions that are up for the three-year appointment will be on the 15th. Regular scheduled meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
40, Counselor McGee, that no parking sign be installed near 970 Hampton Street. To ordinance?
Ordinance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Order at the following, 41, Counselor McGee, or at the following changes be made to the classification and compensation plan of Chapter 2 proposed ordinance, of which there were several attachments, Schedule A, C, and then attachment from the mayor regarding the 40 people who are not part of a union looking for reclassification. Send to ordinance?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 42 from Counselor McGivern, that hereby appropriate transfer $4,477.56 from patrolmen to injured on duty.
Make a motion to spender rules to pass the first reading.
Motion is to spender rules, pass the first reading, our discussion.
Same thing, it's, it's just an accounting to get the money out of salary for patrolmen, for anyone who is injured on duty during a work period, pay period time. We recommend that it be adopted, I recommend that it be adopted tonight.
It's two, two people. So, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer.
Make a motion to spender rules to take 44, 45, and 48 as a package, refer to committee of finance.
44, 45, and.
Appreciate a reading, please.
48, so, 43 already want to finance, 44 is an order that the sum of $8,960,000, $906,000 You can move the 15th to what number, Joe?
The 22nd.
22nd? That, that's fine.
But I'm, I'm not sure. I didn't talk to Linda about that, so I, I don't know. She's already got things set up.
Ordinance is consistently known to meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month.
You could, you could do a special meeting as well, just to appoint the seat.
I might just meet less often.
Counselor Barley?
I was going to suggest, and we do meet on the 8th, which apparently it sounds like we have to. Why, why can't we just have a one-item agenda?
We're going to.
Okay. Oh, no, for the full, for the full board, is my...
No, it was designed for at least filling the seat. That was the consensus of the group.
So, so it's going to be a one-item agenda for the, for the, for the full board?
You can call it a special meeting, you can call it a meeting, however you want to do it. We can do it as a special meeting.
I would suggest a special meeting, because otherwise, whatever the clerk gets, she has to put on the agenda.
All right, so amended to say special meeting for January 8 to fill the Ward 2 seat.
What if we...
We can, we can do that, too.
Well, I was, I was going to raise a, a point of order. So if I did a regular agenda for ordinance, and we were having a special meeting at 7:00, could I simply recess from ordinance?
Recess, yes.
We could then have the special meeting and...
Absolutely.
To get that done.
Yep. So start yours at 6:00 or 6:30. I think you said 6, right?
6:30.
Or 6?
Well, because I didn't know if it was going to be a full agenda, I asked Ryan to do the public hearing, we had promised for 6. I don't know, is that happening?
Yes.
So start at 6, 7, recess if need be, we'll do the filling of the seat, and then go back. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, I withdraw my suggestion.
All right, so order that the January 1 meeting be moved to January 8 as a special meeting to fill the Ward 2 seat. Is that how it should read?
Yes.
All those in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
All opposed? On the amendment to fill, Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, it's a quick question. So that, does that mean we're just, on the 8th, we're just voting for the Ward 2 counselor?
Correct.
And then we're going to have all this stuff done tonight, not until the 15th?
15th.
Okay.
Because that's a regular schedule.
Okay, regular schedule, okay.
We have other appointments that we have to do.
All right, we can do that. I'm good with that.
Well, January, you would have the Water Commissioner, any, any other seat that's open.
I got a letter on the assessor.
The assessor as well?
I mean, should we have the special meeting be for the appointments? The appointment of the counselor and the appointment?
No.
Not the other appointments?
No, save that for the 15th. They can wait.
15th, okay.
Because you have the Water Commissioner.
Because they'll, they'll be landing here. It's going to be a new person, and they're not going to know all the candidates.
Right.
So the 8th is for the Ward 2.
Okay.
The other positions that are up for the three-year appointment will be on the 15th. Regular scheduled meeting.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?